Okay, now we're live. Thank you. Let's pray together. Surely you know, Lord, how grateful we are that we can gather here in this chamber again to conduct the business of our city. Just as our churches and schools made it through the worst pandemic days by using virtual media, our elected leaders and municipal staff managed to Zoom these meetings. But if we ask any pastor, if we ask any teacher, or our mayor, all of them would tell us that meeting online was just not the same as meeting face to face. Thank you, Lord, that the worst of the virus threat seems to be over. Thank you that each day, life in our town moves closer to normal. Thank you that we're back here in this special place. Thank you, Lord, for all who are present here today. Thank you for our council members and all the time and energy they donate to lead our city. Thank you for our capable staff, for the skills and commitment that enable them to serve us so well. Thank you also, Lord, for the residents of our city who care enough to be involved in deliberations here today. Guide all of us in this meeting, Lord, as we negotiate city business and shape the future of our town. By your Spirit, grant all of us wisdom and self-control. We pray this prayer through your Son. Amen.
Okay, I've asked the mayor pro tem to read our proclamation for Juneteenth today.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Mayor. We do have a little bit of feedback, don't we? Adjust it just a little bit here. It's an honor and a privilege to be here today to be able to read this proclamation. So whereas the institution of slavery for African people in America began in 1616 with the landing of the first slaves on our shores and continued officially until President Abraham Lincoln issued the Emancipation Proclamation on January 1st, 1863. And whereas although this historic proclamation was issued in 1863, Texas slaves did not receive word of freedom until two and a half years later on June 19th, 1865, after Union soldiers led by Major General Gordon Granger landed on Galveston Island and announced that all Texas slaves are free. And whereas the 19th day of June, or Juneteenth, became a day of celebration and jubilation for Texas slaves. It is a time marked with not only picnics and family gatherings, but also reflection and rejoicing. In cities across the country, people of all cultures, nationalities, and religions are joining hands so truthfully acknowledge a period in our history that continues to influence our society today. Whereas in 1978, the Honorable Al Edwards Houston of the Texas House of Representatives authored and introduced House Bill 1016 on June 13th, 1979. Governor William P. Clement signed a bill into law that made Juneteenth an official state holiday in Texas. And now therefore, we mayor and city council members of the City of Amarillo, Texas, do hereby recognize June 19th, 2021, as Juneteenth and call upon the citizens of Amarillo to join together in honor of this significant date to recognize the importance of Juneteenth to the freedoms so cherished by the people of the United States. Given under our hands and seal of office this 17th day of June, 2021, the Honorable Mayor Ginger Nelson, council members Cole Stanley, Frida Powell, Eddie Soward, and Howard Smith. And so I would like to accept this proclamation on behalf of the North Heights Advisory Association, and particularly President Melody Graves. And if you all had the opportunity to participate in the Juneteenth activities this past weekend, on Saturday, it was a great turnout and it was certainly, when you looked out into the audience, you could see the different cultures that were represented in our city. This was probably one of the largest events for Juneteenth that we have had. And so I was so proud and honored to be with Mayor Nelson to participate in the parade. We actually rode together and we saw lots of citizens that day. So what I can say is this is definitely history and hashtag progress. So it's just great to receive this and I'm very appreciative of the senators and the representatives that actually voted to make this happen. So just want to thank you, say thank you on behalf of Melody Graves and the North Heights Advisory Association.
Ashton, let's go ahead and do a pic. One, two, three. Thank you.
The next item on our agenda today is public address. I'll turn that over to our meeting coordinator, Jennifer Ramirez.
Thank you for participating in today's city council meeting. Your input and your opinions are important to us and we are glad you're here to share them. At each posted meeting, we invite our fellow community members to address city council regarding posted agenda items. To ensure all who wish to speak are able to, we limit each speaker's time to three minutes. At the end of two and a half minutes, a warning beep will sound from the time clock so you have time to wrap up your thoughts. In accordance with the Open Meetings Act and state law, speakers are asked to limit their comments to items on posted agenda. Doing so will ensure we are all following the guidelines and are able to have an effective and beneficial meeting for all. Thank you for your consideration for this process and your valuable input. The first and only speaker today will be Michael Ford.
Maybe I can get another 10 seconds since I'm the only speaker, perhaps? Good morning, my name, afternoon, actually, my name is Michael Ford, excuse me, as I get this thing fixed here. I'm speaking on item 1B, COVID update. Following my remarks at the last meeting, there were several comments by this panel and others that were, what we say, not accurate. Handing a person a 20-page document expecting them to satisfy any obligation of informed consent is an absolute farce, especially when the potential side effect of death doesn't appear anywhere in any of the packages provided by the city. What exactly is informed consent? According to the American Medical Association, the process of informed consent occurs when communication between a patient and a physician results in the patient's authorization or agreement to undergo a specific medical intervention. In seeking a patient's informed consent, physicians should, among other things, discuss the burdens, risks, and expected benefits, including foregoing treatment. As for risks, there is zero mention of death due to these shots, even though we're on the track to exceed the number of deaths recorded from all vaccines in the VAERS systems for the past 30 years from these three experimental mRNA products. Over 6,000 deaths have been reported in the VAERS. 60% of those deaths are people 66 and older that we've been trying so very hard to protect. At the current rate, by September, we will surpass 9,000 deaths and by the end of the year, we'll be at 12,000 deaths, which is 43 times higher, 43 times the annual average of deaths from all 54 vaccines administered to children and adults in this country. Inexplicably, the city plods along unfazed by these massive numbers, which is in stark contrast to the city's reporting of every new case generated by the RT-PCR tests that we knew were generating upwards of 97% of false positives. But those numbers were gospel. People dying from these vaccines in numbers never seen before. Well, the fact that the WHO has finally awoken from its slumber and stated that children should not be receiving these vaccines until more is known about them change your own recommendations? Children at almost zero risk for every severe, any severe consequence of COVID while getting numbers of, are suffering severe injury and death from these shots. Why aren't therapeutics mentioned in the city's packages? Is it because effective therapeutics will void the emergency use authorizations of the experimental injections? Yes, they will and yes, they should. Hydroxychloroquine was just three weeks ago found to reduce severe effects of COVID, not by 3%, not by 30%, by 300%. What about ivermectin? Ivermectin protects you from getting COVID and will cure you if you have it. Mexico City just cleared out their hospitals by using ivermectin. What about vitamin D? Hey, folks, massively reduce your risk of getting severe COVID illness by getting your vitamin D levels above 50. I could go on and on, but I'll conclude with this. What about melatonin? Clinical researchers at Texas Tech and their Health Sciences Center just published a peer reviewed paper that concluded that, quote, "Melatonin's anti-inflammatory and antioxidant properties protect against COVID-19," end quote, "melatonin is recommended for use on the first day of COVID-19 diagnosis." The city is not providing informed consent on these experimental biologics, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Mr. Ford, I'm sorry, go ahead.
It's Brian's recommendation that we not do questions at this time. It just takes us into an unknown area that we try not to slide close to violating the Open Meetings Act. So if we have questions, let's wait till the agenda item and come back around and do questions then if you don't mind.
Can I come up and answer? Could he ask me a question on the agenda item?
I'm okay with asking on B, on the coronavirus update. I'll ask the question and then is it okay if he, if he had an answer, can he, can he comment?
Um, yeah, I guess so.
If that's all right?
Yeah, that's fine.
As long as it's on the agenda.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's on the agenda and I assure you, I've chaired 70 meetings, over 70 meetings under the Open Meetings Act for the state of Texas, and I assure you, we're not violating any laws by having a conversation. That's noticed. Thank you.
I really appreciate the respect shown to our city attorney for all of the expertise and the time he spends advising us. So I appreciate you, Brian. We're going to trust that advice and we'll look forward to talking about that on item B. Okay, moving forward to item 1A, review the agenda items for regular meeting and attachments. Anybody have questions or anything in their packet about that? No? Okay, let's move on to item 1B then, and that is the coronavirus update. Mr. City Manager?
All right, Mayor, thank you. I'm going to just, and we've got the data right here on the screen, so to an extent, I'm doing what I don't like to do, which is reading stuff that people can already see. But we're going to give a very brief update on what we're, what we've currently experienced as far as our numbers. Total is 34,627. Potter County and Randall County are almost evenly distributed with Potter County having slightly more cases. Recoveries, again, is almost a full, full number, 33,735. Deaths, 766. Active cases right now is 126. Our seven-day rolling, and there it is again, seven-day rolling positivity rate's 1%. And we'll probably do this with Casey going forward. Casey's not available today, so that's going to affect our ability to answer some of the questions, but we can answer most of the questions you might have on coronavirus right now. Seven-day rolling positivity rate is 1%. Five-day new cases, six new cases per day. Drive-through testing positivity rate is zero with an average of two tests per day. So you can see that the testing volume has gone down dramatically, precipitously. GA 34 hospitalization rate is 2.15% and all, all areas of the state are not areas of high hospitalization at this time. Drive-through screening and testing information, you can call Public Health, 378-6300, and the Vaccine Clinic is located at Civic Center Regency Room, entrance number four. That is the northeastmost entrance to the facility on Johnson. So that's what we have right now, Mayor. Aside from the scheduled outreach events, I've got, we're going to be, June 23rd at Owens Corning, trying to grab high employer locations. June 30th, high noon on the square. July 1st at Osarco. And then through July, we've got Bell Helicopter Downtown Women's Center, North Branch Library with WIC, high noon on the square, Osarco again. And then August, we're going to be hitting Downtown Women's Center, Thrift City, Northwest Branch of the, North Branch of the Library.
Great. I noticed that they were at the Juneteenth celebration at the, at Bones Hooks Park on Saturday. Appreciated the people who were willing to work a Saturday clinic there. Council, do y'all have any questions for the city manager about that data? And then I know Councilmember Stanley has a question, we'll go to him after, let's clear that out. Anybody have anything for?
The only question I've got is, at some point in time, we go from yellow to blue or have we already done that?
We've not done that yet and we will be reviewing that. We're reviewing that on a monthly basis right now. So we'll be reviewing that continuously as we go forward. And the trigger for that is going to be when we have reached a point of herd immunity. So that's where we're looking to go to that lowest level, which is going to mean that we still have this. It's still a challenge and there are variants that are going around now that are hitting under vaccinated areas much harder than those that have been vaccinated as much as, say, Amarillo or others that are doing a good job.
Any other questions, Council?
Before we jump to questions, I did have one other thing. We are, we have not received final guidance on ARP, American Rescue Plan protocols, guidelines. We are currently operating under interim final guidelines, which is kind of an oxymoron, I know. We are expecting to have those final guidelines in mid-July. We are going to go ahead using the interim final guidelines to start preparing options for council to consider that meet their criteria laid out in the interim final guidelines for allocation of our funds. We will bring that to council at a upcoming council meeting, take guidance, and put together some final recommendations based on council input. We will also potentially have to modify those recommendations based upon the final guidance when we do receive the final guidance. That way, we're at least ahead of the curve and have plans in place for once those final guidelines come out. Is there any questions?
Any questions about that?
ARP.
Okay. Councilmember Stanley, thanks so much for your patience in letting us just stay with that. Normally, we have more than one person here for comment, so we try to just do public address and not get off track and then go to that agenda item and then ask questions or have discussion there. So thanks for letting us stay with that mode. And I see Mr. Ford is at the back of the room, so.
Yeah, and I'll ask, and Jared, you probably can, can help me with this. Mine was more for a need. The last council session, we had asked for the informed consent. Was that ever put, you know, out to the public in a certain way? I didn't get a copy of, I was looking for the minor and then I was looking for the adult.
We do the exact same informed consent for coronavirus vaccinations that we do for every other vaccination that we do at the civic, at the public health facility.
Okay. And I was just going to ask Mr. Ford, if, did you have an informed consent form that was given to you from the city or was that something that was more universal?
I called and they were very kind to answer my questions and provide the information that they provide to the recipients of the, of the biologics. And there are three packages. There's the Moderna, the Pfizer, and the Janssen, Johnson &amp; Johnson. And those were, I would actually say, one of them is not up to date. The CDC has issued a, I believe the city has a December 20th version of the, of the package and the CDC now has a March 26th version of the package. So I informed them. They were very, very nice people, very professional. They were very kind to share all the information that I requested and there was no problems getting information I requested. I would just recommend that they would, they would actually, these are, these are not simple packages to digest. There's a, there's a registration form, there's a V-safe information, there's also the fact sheet that goes along with that. And those are not, for a person just to be handed that and to assume that that's going to be proper information, they've been properly informed of all the risks associated with those, those interventions, is probably assuming kind of a bridge too far. So I would recommend, why not even put them on the, if people are wondering about it, why not put it on the, on the website? And it's a simple thing. But it's not something you can, it's not something, for whatever reason, it's not something you can search. So I would recommend putting a searchable version of that on the website and, and that would make it much easier for people to get, actually get some kind of informed consent. But again, it's missing a whole side of the severest effects on there that aren't even mentioned on there.
Okay. And I know Casey's, I know Casey's out of town, right? And so.
She is, but the consent information that we use specific to the coronavirus vaccinations are what has come out of the expert vaccine allocation panel, what has also been promulgated by CDC and also the Texas DSHS. So we are using best practice with regard to informed consent as it relates to coronavirus.
Just in, just as a point of, of discussion, those are, those are not, those are fact sheets and those are not informed consent packages.
I think that everybody's going to dispute, is it enough? Is it too much? But we're using the best practices.
Okay, so if you look at the, if you look at the EUA or the directions to healthcare practitioners and what it says is you must include these lists of adverse effects, death of which is one of them, and that's not anywhere in there. So you can go back and contrast with the direction you're getting from healthcare practitioners with the FDA and the CDC puts out, and you're not in alignment with that.
Is that something we could just get an update from Casey on?
Sure, absolutely.
Okay, that'd be great. Thank you, Mr. Ford. We appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Councilmember Stanley, any other questions?
No, I just, I know that I wanted the informed consent for myself to read, so I'd still like to get those. And then any other data that we have on how we came about that, some of the stuff you're talking about, Jared, I'd like to be educated so that when we do have, you know, an individual like Mr. Ford who's highly educated and knows where he's reading from, that I'm informed on my side as well, so. But thank you for taking the time, letting me have him come back up here and educate me a little more.
We'll go into more detail at the next meeting from Casey on.
Really, if you can follow up with an email to us ahead of time, I think that would really be great.
Absolutely.
I meant to Jared, yeah. Yeah, if Jared could get Casey to answer those questions and get an email to council so that we would have immediate information for any citizens that ask us, then we won't have to wait till our next.
Sounds good.
Next meeting.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Ford.
Okay. Item 1C is an update on the Parks Master Plan. Mr. City Manager?
All right, we've got Michael Kishuba along with our consultants from MIG Consulting. Michael? Michael, Director of Parks and Recreation, sorry.
Mayor and Council, today we get to give you an update on the Parks Master Plan. This is a process that we've been working on for just around 18 months. Would like to acknowledge our consultant, Cindy Mendoza with MIG, and also our Park Board Chair, Mr. John Ingerson. With that, what I'd like to do is turn it over to Ms. Cindy Mendoza and she'll walk through the presentation. We'd be happy to answer any questions.
Welcome, Cindy.
Thank you so much. It's my honor to be here this afternoon to be able to give you an update on the Parks and Recreation Master Plan as they pull up the presentation for us. I would like to let you know that at this point in the planning process, it was my hope and everyone's hope that I would be here to present a draft plan to you today. But obviously, a lot has changed since we initiated this planning process. COVID wasn't even looming on the horizon when we initiated things. And so we have pivoted the plan to make sure that it successfully responds to current conditions and also looks forward into the next 10 years. We're going to give you an update on the master plan, where we are in this planning process, as well as the new investment strategies that we have been developing and working with the Parks and Recreation Department's staff, as well as our Parks and Recreation Advisory Board as well. So with that in mind, as you see from the graphic here, we are in phase four of a four-phase planning process. It is the intent at this point to develop an action plan that will guide the specific moves for the development and investment in the park system moving forward. As part of this planning process, as you know, because we brought this information to you previously, we included an extensive community engagement planning, in the planning process, including over 2,400 participants that are residents, stakeholders, and even board members and advisory committee members who are weighing in on top priorities. As you see here, what they were telling us even pre-COVID and into the first phases of COVID is that maintaining and repairing existing assets was critical to them, as well as adding more and a greater variety of recreation opportunities and indeed even building more paths and trails. As part of that, though, we also cross-checked the information that we were receiving from residents with a thorough analysis of the park and recreation system. And we had checked in with you there. You may remember this graphic. This was one type of the analysis that we conducted where we looked at park and recreation needs and the distribution of parks across the city, recognizing that while residents are telling us first and foremost to invest in current assets and asset management, what this map shows you is that the areas in the blue rectangles are going to be new development areas that are in need of new parkland regardless. And the areas that are highlighted in orange are areas that are either not well-served by existing parks, may have a school park in that area where there's a question about how best to use those joint use arrangements, or have other underlying needs that make it difficult for them to drive the mile to a nearby park, which is more extensive than the national standard for travel distance, which is assumed to believe be a 10-minute walk or a half mile. The other piece of this, as a reminder, is that we are facing the asset management cliff. A separate asset management plan made it very clear that there are a number of maintenance needs. And this is in addition to the needs for routine and preventative maintenance, the day-to-day maintenance that happens in the park system. This was more specifically looking at the long-term repair and replacement of assets, recognizing that they were substantially underfunded. And then even further, talking about how do we beautify and green the park system? Well, the information I have for you today is not just what was done in the 2019 Asset Management Plan, but we'd like to share some updated numbers with you so you can see how drastically the situation has changed in just a two-year period based on the lack of investment in parks amenities and facilities going forward. So a lot of the assets that were in a medium-risk category are now moving to a high-risk category. And these calculations are actually based on a spreadsheet from the 2019 Asset Management Plan, which means they do not factor in the current crisis in development, which is the cost of materials that we are seeing nationwide, that Parks and Recreation Agencies are facing a challenge in terms of bringing projects in on budget because it has increased costs nationwide. So that is a real consideration that is not reflected in those numbers.
So this, real quick, so the change from the original high risk to the increased high risk, that's in an 18-month period of time or is it even less than that?
It would have been, it would have been after completion of the Asset Management Plan, so we started the, yeah, it would have been about two years. And so those were just items that were, if you look at the, the medium risk, there was a large number of items in low to medium risk and basically they've shifted up a category so they've gone from low to medium and medium to high.
And that's just in a two-year period of time?
So the interesting part about this planning process has been the fact that while council members are very aware and insightful of the challenges faced in the park and recreation system, as are our board members, the public in general has not been aware of the extensive ness of the issues that are faced by the park system. So when we first talked about the master plan, the direction that we received is that we should incorporate that analysis into an update of the community's vision, goals, and values for Parks and Recreation as well as objectives. And the sense was that in replacing and updating the old plan that was created years ago, we really need to develop consensus around where we were going, that sense of direction, that sense of vision. And that weighed a little bit more heavily than the desire to have a step-by-step action plan. But as we mentioned, you know, things have changed. As we continued to update information, we did identify a new mission for the Parks and Recreation Department, new vision and goals for the park and recreation system, providing that vision plan aspect that was requested. We also, in detail, identified a number of objectives and action items associated with implementing each of those goals. In addition to that, we worked with the Beautification and Public Arts Advisory Board to create a new Public Arts and Beautification Plan, to identify a vision for arts across the community and also to identify the steps needed to begin to implement that vision and those goals. And beyond that, we also worked with the Pedestrian and Bicycle Safety Advisory Board, as well as the Public Works Department and Transportation in particular, to understand what a new trails vision and concept might look like for the entire community. So all of these really reflect that long-range vision of where the park and rec system, as well as the city in general, would like to pursue. And then things were shifting a little bit because as the city updated its parkland dedication requirements, we started asking questions about we started asking questions about the standards that needed to be provided for new development. And the question really became, by this point of the planning process, recognizing that we are facing a severe funding shortage, both for routine maintenance as well as asset management, do we really want developers to be providing these fully-loaded, well-developed neighborhood parks like we currently have if we cannot take care of them? And that started a conversation where we began checking in regularly with the Parks and Recreation Board, and meeting with them to start to talk through this master plan and what we wanted to achieve in this master plan. And the direction that we received from them at this point is, let's think about this more. Let's slow the planning process down. Let's put things on hold temporarily so we can start to see whether this long-range vision and goals is going to help get us where we need to be, or whether we need to pivot things here slightly to focus more on the action planning and investment needed. Because the direction from the board is we need a very strong investment strategy in this plan to carry us forward over the next 10 years. And the goal is to get us through the next 10 years, which may be lean, but reflecting the fact that we are in the intent of helping Parks and Rec funding rebound to be able to reinvest in that park system. So what that meant is we pivoted and came up with a new investment strategy that we would like to share with you today, just to make sure that we are on track at this point of the planning process. You know, early on, there was a conversation that as our advisory board members mentioned, we could either increase funding or decrease our services. And it was an either-or. And we started looking at these levels of investment, recognizing that the high-level investment, the extreme increase in funding, really wasn't going to happen. It's not realistic at this point or in through the next 10 years. But on the other hand, that low level of investment, you know, that's realistic, but honestly, it's not desired. It's not what we heard from the public and the engagement results. And it's not where, through our professional work with communities and cities across the nation, we would advise you to go. Because what that means, for example, if in the dedication requirements you only required, you know, basic green space with no amenities and facilities, because you can't take care of them, what you are doing is you're sending the city down a path of decreasing its level of service going forward. And what we would like to do is create, at this point in time, a path where you are able to toe the line and then increase your level of service. We want to make sure that we are equipping you with the right strategies and tools to be able to carry that forward. So to do that, we think the level of service you need to provide is somewhere in that medium to low range in the next 10 years. It's going to take some level of investment to keep a medium level of service, but it also then reflects the fact that it will give you an opportunity to move forward towards a higher level of investment later.
Michael, I just want to interrupt there. Cindy, if you don't mind going back, do you have dollar numbers? I mean, I see the colors and the blocks, but I'm kind of just curious, from a council's point of view, what type of funding, what dollar levels are you talking about to be medium-low?
Well, and I think to go back and look at kind of the higher range, so that would be basically fixing everything that we've got. You're looking, the Asset Management Plan put it between 3.1 and 3.7 million annually. So that would be to fix everything that we've currently got without adding stuff to the system. So that would be fixing restrooms and trash cans and all the facilities that are currently in place. So that's that 3.1 to 3.7 to fix what we currently have. And again, that's without any additions to the system. So if a new parkland came on, then obviously, we would have to adjust for that. So.
Okay, so let me ask you this. So whenever we're considering that, because I do realize that there are some big-ticket items. So how do you account for the lighting that's so desperately needed at the parks, which is a $10-million need, a really bad $10-million need to put those parks back to a point where you can have baseball tournaments and softball tournaments and that kind of thing? Because that's like three years of upgrade. So how do we, how does that fit into this 3.7 million a year to upgrade?
I really appreciate that question, because that feeds into why you need a larger investment strategy instead of just saying, do we replace lighting? Do we replace playgrounds? Part of that investment strategy is dictated by understanding where cities make money on Parks and Recreation and where you have to spend money. So the slide here shows the areas that are really about where you need to invest money in Parks and Recreation Services. In other words, these things are your core services, and you're going to need to subsidize them, because they don't make money. So park maintenance, the support of playgrounds, neighborhood green space, providing just general community events. Specialized events may make money, but just general community events that are free to everyone across the community and foster that strong sense of community typically are not the types of things that make money. In general, anything that has a broad public support or a public safety benefit are the things that you need to be ready to invest in. But then there are other things that really should be making money. And that's where your sports field lighting comes in. The reason for investing in these things, it's not necessarily that it has a broad benefit. I come from a sports background. I will tell you sports benefits, everyone, but not all of everyone agrees with that. So with that in mind, there are things that have a more individualized benefit. You know, ballet classes can be that way, for example. And so some of these things that have like a higher enrichment value or higher entertainment value are the places where parks departments are generally making money. And the idea is that you are investing those, but changing your management strategy so that you have a higher return on investment there. So things such as your specialized facilities, they should be making you money. Arts and cultural events that are more individualized, they should be making money. Any type of facility rentals, they should be making money. So what's underlying that is a cost recovery implication that says that the costs associated with that are recovered at at least 100%, if not more. So that means your maintenance costs are covered, your staffing costs, your equipment costs, any labor involved. And the piece that some cities forget is there should be an added facility replacement fee that is built in so that you're generating money for the wear and tear of your facilities. And then beyond that, if managed highly effectively, your intent is to generate revenues then to put back into some of those things that you have to subsidize. And so what that means is it's not a choice between, should we invest more money or should we cut services? It's all of the above, but it has to be really strategic in where you're investing. So invest in your core services. Increase fees and revenues wherever possible. Reduce services in key areas that you can't continue to main things based on their current costs. And we'll talk about what those are here momentarily. Reduce things like subsidies. You know, a pool, for example, is going to be something you subsidize. It's, pools are high-cost operating items, but they obviously have a broader community benefit. But making sure that you have enough deck space, that you have rental cabanas, that you are doing concessions and rental pool equipment to try to reduce that subsidy and make money to the extent feasible, is one of the things to consider. The harder one to understand is, you know, the desire that many cities have to bring in money by getting into these larger economic impact projects, we call them. And economic impact projects are great. They bring in revenue for the city. You need to make sure they're also structured in a way to bring in revenue for the Parks and Recreation Department to continue to provide those facilities. Example I have for you there is Sparks, Nevada, adjacent to Reno. We worked with them extensively for a while. They have the single-largest artificial turf installation sports field complex in the nation. And in addition to that, ran a variety of their events and programs for the economic impacts. But what they didn't quite understand is that their Parks Department staff were all working overtime on the setup and takedown for these events and programs. So the Parks Department was losing money. Plus, there was no fees built in for asset management. So they were running their facilities into the ground by these highly-successful events that were bringing people into the city. And more than that, they were running into the situation where it wasn't financially sustainable. So the hotels and restaurants were getting money, but the fees associated with the events weren't enough that the city then even had money to reimburse the Parks and Recreation Department. So there was trade-offs, but it wasn't a long-term sufficient strategy. So making sure that when, anytime there's this grand idea to bring more people into town for tournaments or events, that is managed in a way that's going to protect your assets long-term. And then obviously, diversifying resources and funding wherever feasible. And what this means is that we have created this investment strategy that looks at by park type, the percentage of cost recoveries that should be made at different types of parks. And we started to classify your parks a little differently, recognizing that you've got small neighborhood parks that really are intended to provide close-to-home recreation. Core services, you're going to subsidize those. Some of your neighborhood parks may have some programming capacity, but those larger ones, still not going to be generating a lot of money. But the notion is, in your community parks and regional parks, that's where you start to ramp up that investment to make sure, you know, currently, you are investing in places that are going to generate revenue. So to your point, council member, about sports field lighting and how that compares to playgrounds, for example, currently now, sports field lighting is the place to go, making sure that you are getting your return on investment. Right now, we're going to talk about, you know, tapping back the brakes on neighborhood parks a little bit and streamlining those, because those aren't going to make you money. So let's dig us out of the hole that we're in currently and then go back to providing a higher level of service for neighborhood parks and things that need to be subsidized. So this investment strategy looked at the way that funds are spread across the city. So making sure that from an equity standpoint, we are investing in the right places, in the right locations, and not putting all the money into parks that are all located in the same part of the city, for example. We then took it further into, we started to create this preliminary action plan. And I apologize that some of these slides aren't reading right, so there's a little bit of overlap on the screen here. In this action plan, you know, we all realized that that vision concept wasn't taking us where we wanted to go. So at the Parks and Rec Board Direction, we took that one off. And so we started to figure out, again, where's that middle ground between this mid-level business-style approach and the extreme service reduction, recognizing that we need to do both, ramp up revenues and decrease services. And what that means is that the new focus really needs to be on that return in investment. Invest in the things that are going to bring you back money in the short term to reinvest in the system. So what does that mean for an action plan? You know, there's just a few items noted here, such as investing, as we just said, and those things that are going to make you money. But I think the clarification there is money for the city and the Parks and Rec Department. You don't necessarily want it to align the pockets of partners, or while we want to invest in hotels and restaurants, those economic impacts, again, are added benefit, but while you need to be taking care of your own assets. So part of it may be identifying partners to step up support in the short term, recognizing that the city has been able in the past to do things such as provide a zoo that typically aren't core services for Parks and Recreation Agencies. And when you have funding, a zoo is a fabulous resource for your community. If you do not have funding, it falls in that category of those larger specialized facilities that either need to figure out how to ramp up the revenue so they operate on a break-even basis, or even bring in partner groups who have a need to keep the zoo open for the public benefit. Involve them to help offset some of those costs. And then starting to look at, how do we reduce and remove subsidies? Mr. Keshuba is already looking at how to contract out services for maintenance in places where that will streamline costs. They have been looking at the golf courses over the last couple of years to really ramp up revenues there. You've seen the progress that has been made at the golf courses, and especially with the increased play through COVID. So it's really focusing on those money-making strategies now. The other piece of that is coordinating with some others to do part of that lifting on trails, for example, which are in high-community demand. Looking at regional partnerships there, as well as the transportation plan, and how do you street rights of ways to support the trail connectivity that's desired? And even with regards to public arts, there's large conversations around how do we align a lot of different interests in arts in Amarillo to really get this public arts program off the ground? But then also prioritizing funding for asset management, as we talked a bit about moments ago, and scaling back temporarily things like your neighborhood parks, where we just can't afford to replace them at the level of service that they were provided in the past. And that's a sensitive point for many. So I want to walk out of here, letting you know that we are looking at what those neighborhood parks should and could look like to still provide the desired benefits for residents across the community. And what it means is that your neighborhood park may be smaller or lesser developed. Typically, isn't going to have restrooms, because neighborhood parks are serving nearby neighbors. The thought is they can go home to use the restrooms there. But more than that, it recognizes that you're not going to have neighborhood parks with all the bells and whistles. But people want the bells and whistles. So we started looking strategically about how do we space across the system those parks that have more of an active recreation focus to support health and fitness? Instead of a neighborhood park, we call those a wellness hood park. How do we identify those places where stronger contact with nature is desired? And finding ways to connect people through community gardening, for example, is important. So creating some of those nature hood parks. And then even in areas with unique cultural diversity or a high interest in arts or Amarillo's heritage and history, how can we create some neighborhood parks that emphasize those aspects of the community's diversity and heritage? We call those heritage hood parks. So while your neighborhood park may not end up with everything in it that it had in the past, as you go through this asset management plan and begin to replace the assets that are there or close some things down, but it'll still, across the city, give you a diversity of opportunities to meet community needs. So those are the strategic ways. We have just been entirely rethinking the investment strategy here. And we wanted to check in with you to make sure that this approach seems sound to you all, to see if you have any questions before we go out to the public and then share this information with them. Again, recognizing that many in the public are going to be surprised that parks are in these dire straits. They will want to support parks. We are already hearing from folks who definitely want to ensure a strong park and recreation system moving forward. So with that feedback, with your guidance, with the public feedback, we'll then refine that action plan and wrap up the plan here to provide the 10-year guidance for you all moving forward.
Council questions for Cindy about this?
Okay, so Cindy, so what I hear you saying is that our next steps right now would be for you all to get community input, and then you would come back to council with whatever the input that the community has?
We would. Our understanding is that council desires to have a plan wrapped up relatively quickly at this point. So our thought is that your guidance today, plus the community input that would occur in early July, would go straight into a draft park and recreation master plan. And we would come back at that point with the draft plan, based on community input, for you all to review.
Thank you. And would that be in time for budget, Michael?
Well, our goal is to try to get it wrapped up before September, late August, early September. And so we might miss the window in terms of the budget for this current year. But I think we can take a lot of the principles that are in this plan and start to apply them. So we can take some of those strategies. We're already looking at the strategies that our consultant has outlined, and looking at ways to start implementing those. So we can go through those strategies, some of those goals. There'll probably be some refinement through community input, but we can already start taking some of the current strategies and looking at how to apply those.
Thank you.
So Cindy, I do have a question for you. Do you take into account the schools and school district support on their parks and facilities?
Michael, you want to kind of bring him up to speed on that?
Yes, so the one slide that we showed with our current assets, that does not include the school parks. So there's a combination of multiple agreements in place. So some of the school parks we own, portions of. Some of the school parks we don't own any portions of, and we just have maintenance agreements. So what we did was we tried to separate city-owned from school-owned. So the asset management numbers that we showed just reflected the city-owned parcels or pieces. There are some additional numbers that would reflect the school portion of that. So we've got that broken out. I'd be happy to get you a copy of the asset management plan, and you can kind of see both pieces of it and how they fit together.
Yes, sir, that'd be great. And then on, I understand that we're not. And then on, I understand that we're not looking at the big ticket, the high dollar item. But if you have a schedule of values on that, I think it would be helpful for the council to be able to see what we are prioritizing and saying, oh, well, we can't do this because we have a limited amount of funds. So we cut A, B, and C, but we kept D through F or whatever. And so if you could schedule those, then at least we know, yeah, we're getting rid of this, we're okay with this. We understand that's not a big priority for our community. Or at least we have a schedule of value where we can work backward from. Is that something you're already going to have in place or is that a task?
We're currently working on that. So we're breaking down that asset management need by the different components. So we'll break it down by athletics, we'll break it down by general park maintenance, we'll break it down by pools, we'll break it down by Warford, by the zoo, so that we'll be able to look at those in bite-sized pieces and look at what the investment would be and also the risk for each of those items. Because each one, you know, there are different life stages in terms of risk. Now, most of them are in that medium to high risk, but we'll be able to break it down into smaller bite-sized pieces so we can evaluate that in each step.
Mr. City Manager, have you and Mr. Kishuba had a chance to meet with Councilmember Stanley to go over that asset management plan? Because I think when Cindy referenced the asset management cliff, that, I mean, we are careening toward that and we see it even in what's happened in the last two years. I think that would be really, really useful information. And since Cole is new, he hasn't seen that. And so all of that data that we have, he doesn't have. And I think it's going to be really important as we approach especially budget conversations about maintenance and at what level should we be funding maintenance. We all have the, in my mind at least, the boulder is at the top and it is tilting. But I don't know that we've done a good job yet. We've been trying to, you can only swallow so much. So we've been trying to prioritize it, but I think it's time for you guys to get that information, get that asset management plan to him so he can digest that content and have that background.
We'd be happy to provide that.
Thank you. And then just last question, do we already, and this may be a piece of the puzzle that I'll get later, but do we already have in place in management the abilities to do what she's recommending in the way of the things that produce income? At the pools and at the parks and things like that, do you have a structure in place for that already?
It's something we're reevaluating. So one of the things that we've started to do is like with athletics, we've started to break out what the athletic maintenance component is. Because that's something we historically haven't tracked. So within park maintenance, you've got a lot of other costs. So for example, they help with the zoo, they help with the pools, they help with park maintenance, they help with all of those other facilities. So what we're looking at is taking those pieces that park maintenance is doing and being able to compare it to the revenues so that we get a true cost recovery model. From there, we'll be able to see, are our fees covering what the costs are for those specific entities? So for example, if we know that right now athletics makes this much revenue and we've got this much cost in park maintenance, what is our percentage? And how do we move it closer to that 100% cost recovery? So we're working on those building blocks where we can start to build off of it and reevaluate our fees and those types of things.
We do track maintenance costs, but heretofore, we've not really broken it out by
By piece.
By pieces, which is going to be essential for us to identify what types of revenues we need to generate by function to be able to generate the funds to be able to properly maintain each facility.
Yes, sir, and then more in the line of promotion. Do we have a structure in place to promote those items? Do we have fields that are sitting with nobody on them and we could be, you know, leasing those out?
Yes, so strategically, we've made some changes over the last couple of years. We've worked in terms of scheduling our fields a little bit differently. We've tried to promote programs differently. So in terms of golf, that was one of the things that we got a lot of feedback from the golf task force. We took a lot of those recommendations and put those into place. And as a result, you've seen a significant change in trajectory when it comes to golf. So we've seen increased revenues, decreased expenses as a result of some of those recommendations. So yes, we're looking at our business in the terms of cost recovery more than we have in the past and trying to figure out where are we missing the mark still. Obviously, there's some things that we still need to adjust, but we're trying to make sure we've got the information to make those wise stewardship decisions.
And if I can add one more comment, it's the notion that in many places, when you start to take this business approach, there are going to be sports management organizations that will come in and make the pitch that they can manage something better or more efficiently because they don't have all the overhead that the city would have. And honestly, one thing to be aware of though is that they are really good at making money for themselves first and foremost. So we have navigated a lot of situations where the city has found themselves in an agreement where they've traded off some of the revenues that should have been going back to the city that instead are going to some sports management group. So be aware of that as this shift comes underway, that you need to make sure you're protecting your assets and keeping control of the revenues so that you don't end up maintaining facilities for someone else to make money on.
Thank you, Cindy. John, did you have something?
No.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Go right ahead.
If you don't mind, I'll run it and, because I fully intend to get to John, but I wanted to make sure we had no other questions from the council and wrap up with Cindy if that's okay. Got it? Okay. Yes, Cindy, back to you. Questions from the left-hand side? Okay, thank you.
Okay, so the first thing that worries me a little bit is shifting away from a long-term view. Because I'm afraid if we shift away from what our goal is 20 years from now and all we focus on is this little piece, short-term, midterm, then we're going to end up with something that is not going to work long-term for us. And so I hope in this, we're not just going to be looking, we're not going to drop our long-term vision. I would tell you, this, the council, everything that we've done has been about a long walk in the same direction. And so we need to make for sure that we are not dropping a long-term vision plan for what's going on. We need to know the cost, we need to know how we come about those costs. Do private, public, private partnerships, where do they fit into this? What do, what kind of revenues will need to be generated? What kind of input do we need to put into a city as a city? There's, so I feel like there's a lot that's missing.
So one of the things, when we went into this plan, and I think Cindy touched on it, was we were really looking at initially 75% very forward-looking with 25% rooted in the here and now. I think one of the feed, some of the feedback we got from the Park Board is we've got a problem we need to address here and now. So we need to shift that percentage, so 75% here and now. But we always have to have long-term aspirations. We always want to be looking forward at what could we be in five, 10, 15, 20 years. But I think we also have to recognize where we currently are with the resources that we have and those assets that are starting to fail. So we want to always be looking forward because there's always creative ways to get there. There's always creative ways to come up and find solutions to vision. I think the perfect example was the trails at Rick Klein. You know, that was something that when we were looking at this, we wanted trails was a priority. We were approached by a group, they moved that forward. So we always want to have those aspirational things, but we also have to have it rooted in the here and now. This is where the challenges are, but we also want to be aspirational. So we've just shifted those percentages a little bit so that we're more based on the here and now, but there still will be aspirational components of this is where we want to get to. We just want to make sure our foundation is good and solid underneath us.
So where do the four neighborhood projects fit into this? Because I would assume, you know, San Jacinto, North Heights. Actually, North Heights is a big problem on that map, that there's not enough park. So how do we incorporate using our four neighborhood plans into making this also work?
And that was the importance of updating that parkland dedication ordinance that really looked at the full cost of providing park land and developed amenities and facilities to meet the needs of those developing areas. So that that will be a resource that increases to make sure that those new parks are still going in. And then there will be recommendations in the plan about the similar day-to-day routine maintenance dollars increases that will need to happen simultaneously then to take care of those and seeing where that funds come from. Because again, it's a trade-off. That funds will probably decrease somewhere else in order to increase towards those new developed parks.
Well, and just to give a little bit of clarification, so the parkland dedication is something that we have asked to be considered as a part of the zoning plan. So it wouldn't be standalone in the Parks Master Plan, it would be integrated into the zoning.
And I think to Dr. Sowers' question though, our park spacing, as we go forward, our park spacing analyses are going to identify places where we need to put parks, what size parks those need to be, this is going to help inform that. It doesn't necessarily create the resources to place the parks, but it identifies where they need to be. Part of this process will also identify what modifications we need to make to our park inventory, if any. We, for example, we might have some parks in locations where it doesn't, I mean, I'm not going to say it totally doesn't make sense, but it doesn't match with what, where we would place a park, given where all of our parks are. So we may have concentrations of parks relative to park voids. So we will make those adjustments also, and those are going to be very challenging conversations that will not be fully answered or explored in the Parks Master Plan, but it will lay out the process by which we can have those conversations. So I think your main question was, what are we going to do to get parks in these areas that don't have enough parks? Neighborhood parks, the small type parks, obviously we have the big regional park nearby, but it doesn't serve, you know, the interior needs of the community, so.
Well, I think it actually, it was also partly the fact that we've got these neighborhoods that we are trying to help give them the opportunity to revitalize themselves. And so how does their park system within there? Because each one of them, like North Heights has got Bones Hooks and there's some parks that are actually in San Jacinto the same way it's in the Barrios and in East Ridge. So does that incorporate into all of this also?
Yes, it definitely does. We are looking at, if you recall, that kind of conceptual map that showed the different park types with the different shaped symbols. It's that overarching investment strategy across the city, recognizing that in some parts of the city, such as the northeast, there's opportunities that are missing. And so it may be looking at a school park partnership, but instead of making it a small neighborhood park, invest there to create a larger neighborhood park in a cost-effective way to meet needs in an area where there are none.
So does your plan also give us some ideas of how we rectify the huge difference between us and the school districts? Because like Mr. Kishuba said, we've got some that we own, some that they own, some that we partner with on. And so is there, is there an idea of how we level the playing field, so to speak? So that everything is basically on the same, the same way?
Part of the neighborhood park concept that we were starting to look at is also rethinking what an official school park would look like for a school neighborhood park. And I say that because you've had school parks in the past, some of them which were actually school facilities that were maintained by the Parks Department. But a school park across the nation is often where there's a collaboration between the schools who are providing the land in some facilities and cities who are adding the investment there, recognizing it's more cost-effective to do that than to build their own park nearby. So it is a shared collaborative arrangement in that way.
And I think one of the things is looking at where we have duplicated services. I think the city manager touched on that just briefly is, are there areas where we've got duplicated service where a neighborhood or a community is being served by multiple parks? If that's the case, then maybe those are some of the conversations we have about, well, we've already got a park that serves that community or that neighborhood. And also, the other opportunity is, you know, for example, in the northeast, there might be opportunities to partner to get bigger return on investment in terms of serving our community. So I think it's looking at them at a case-by-case basis, knowing that some places we have duplicated services, some places we don't have any services. And so trying to figure out how do we best serve the community, working with our school partners.
Let's think of it.
I would think as we look at that, and I'm just thinking through my mind about the parks around town, there's no regional park on the northeast side of town, correct?
That's correct.
And so that leaves us with kind of a gaping hole that actually at some point in time in our list of things we need to do, that's got to be addressed also, I would think.
I'll just add in and say that is something I have asked a lot about in the tri-state fairground master plan. If it couldn't be part of developing that area as a recreation area, especially in our partnership and the events that the Quarter Horse Association brings and the rodeos and all of that, could we not also be developing in our minds that we would have a regional park there? And I mean, poor Michael, every time I have a conversation with him, he's like, but mayor, we have more than we can handle right now. But I think, you know, what you're working toward is a more efficient system overall. And I'm with you, Eddie, that it does feel like a gaping lack that we don't have a regional park in the northeast side of town.
Yeah, at some point, we will have to have some way to address that because that part of town is just as deserving as
It's very deserving.
So I guess that's all in part of this. It's kind of like we've got this thing that we've had for however many, 50 years or whatever, and now then it's like we've been on cruise control and now then we're tapping the brakes and realizing, wait, this really needs some major service before we put it back out again.
Well, and I think we just want to be good stewards. And when it comes to those park spaces, making sure that where we can partner and get good return on investment, we do it. And where we can serve our community better, we do it. And so I think once we get that blueprint, then we can start looking at where does it make sense to start looking at putting in a new facility down the road? I mean, we got to address what we have, but there's other ways to fund things through grants and other opportunities. That once we have this plan in place, we can start looking at other ways to help try to come up with some funding as well.
Well, I think part of this is really important because we are doing all of this economic development. But when these companies come or whatever business or startups, whatever that are doing, not only are they looking at our city and the resources our city has, but they're also looking at quality of life. And quality of life, I think after COVID was in place, is becoming, has moved itself up the ladder. And we've got to make for sure that we're trying to cover that base. Or at least we've got a plan for covering that base whenever we're talking to new people coming.
Councilmember Smith, do you have any questions?
Are there any parks right now? There was discussion in the past that we may have too many parks. Are there some we're going to abandon, you recommend?
That's an easy softball question for you.
So we are looking at the level of investment in different areas, especially where there is duplication of services. So at this point, it wasn't our thought that we would go through and identify parks to offload or sell. The thought is in the short term, let's reduce services, let's see if we can increase revenues elsewhere to see if we can turn this around. If, the better approach in terms of extra land are land leases. So you don't lose control of any parkland, you're not giving up any parkland, but potentially on a short-term basis, able to lease some of your parkland out for other uses that again allow you to continue to own that land for future park and recreation use, but generate revenues off it currently.
Thank you.
So Cindy, did I understand you to say no, not selling parks? I just want to be very clear about that. But anticipating, how do we reduce the cost on the taxpayers of maintaining everything that we have? Maybe we could do that by generating revenue through some leasing or development opportunities.
Yeah, I think we'd be looking at those duplicated areas and also looking at the assets. So maybe some of those assets, as they age out, we just remove. You know, do we need 50 picnic tables? Maybe we need 10. So part of it is also an exercise in park planning where we're actually looking at what the needs are of those parks. So it may not be removing park space, but it might be removing assets within those park spaces. So do we need five shelters? Maybe we just need one. So it's looking at it from a design standpoint, as well as an asset standpoint of, maybe we've got too many assets within those facilities. Not too many facilities, but too many assets within those facilities.
Okay, and then I had questions about public engagement. It gets, you've been engaging the public. I mean, Michael, how long have you been here? Two years, two and a half?
Just across three.
Just across three, okay. So in the course of showing up here and seeing that we were, we had for years drastically underfunded the maintenance of our parks, you started trying to create data points. Thank you for that because we have needed that as a council. And so we have the asset management study and now we have a Parks Master Plan. You've done a great job of better interfacing with our Parks and Rec Board. So there's been a lot of work to get to this point. And the public has been involved in all of those steps for the last three years. But now we're at the point where we're putting the final touches on the Parks Master Plan. Can you just verbalize what that public engagement looks like so that we as citizens can interface with our, the people we answer to at the grocery store and church? And we want to be able to tell people how to engage and how their voices can be heard about the park system.
Excellent point, and I appreciate that question because there's two parts to the answer. One is that as we finalize this master plan, we will go out with the information about the priorities that we have seen across the community and the things that need to shift in terms of the investment strategy to understand what feedback we will receive, how people will react. But we're also recognizing that this is going to be the first time that some people truly But we're also recognizing that this is going to be the first time that some people truly hear that changes are needed and underway. And so it's really the first part of a larger public information campaign that continues to share out what the challenges are, but also include a call to action to get other stakeholders, other partners, and even volunteers involved in the park and recreation system, which is actually really common that has been since the Great Recession in 2008. Many cities have turned towards that model to really collaborate with residents more thoroughly in terms of their support for parks and recreation. So the, the two pieces, the first one is really the information that will feed into the master plan. The second one is a larger information campaign with a call to action.
I think it's really important, Michael, that we don't pull any punches when we're talking to the public. And, and part of that is, sometimes it gets presented in bureaucratic data analysis speak, and, and we shouldn't. When we come back to the community, especially in this last round of public engagement, I mean, they need to hear the city saying, we're at a point of crisis in maintaining the parks that we have. And how did we get to that point of crisis? And what do we think the road out looks like? But unless we define it and frame it as a point of crisis, they're going to hear, yeah, things could be better. And they're experiencing, I mean, when they go to the parks, they're seeing the deterioration and all. But I think they need to understand that where we are is underwater and our trend is downward. And if they don't have that trend information, they might just be thinking, well, we're about to make some changes, or city council should put more dollars toward that. And I think that's a false narrative for them, even if it's something they're verbalizing internally in their minds. We have got to be very direct in those public engagement, because if they're giving us feedback on whether to reduce services and/or reduce, and/or increase funding, I, I need to know the feedback we're getting from them comes from them knowing the full picture. Otherwise, I think we're in a tight spot. The feedback we have from them doesn't have the full picture, then we don't have the data we need from citizens to know which direction to go.
Yeah, like some things that I've learned in the past month, month and a half are like, if I remember correctly, at Southwest Soccer Field, there is no lighting anymore. You have to have a lighting upgrade. There's a thing that occurred, and the transformers no longer work with the lighting. So the wiring, everything has to be replaced. We're one electrical event away from having no lighting at Martin Road. So I think those things publicly needs to know, this is where we stand, and we're one event away from having no lighting at Martin Road. Oh, you have no lighting, so there are no night games for soccer at Southwest. I think those things are part of what, because I think whenever I first heard that, that's pretty shocking to realize, you mean, we don't have that available to us anymore? And, and then to realize what is required and where we came from, and what is required to get to the point where we're back where we need to be, it's pretty shocking.
And I think one of the great things about the way we've approached the master plan is we did the asset management plan first. So it's rooted in actual situation of where we're at. You know, a lot of times you just do a master plan independent, but ours is based on those assets that are currently in place. So it's a really solid foundation. It's not subjective, it's very objective. We're looking at it from a third-party perspective and taking those, that information and feeding it into our Parks Master Plan to figure out how we move forward. And I think that's where the Park Board has really played a strong role in the last couple months, is looking at, we, we want a plan that's actionable. We want something that we can move forward and it doesn't just sit on a shelf. And so that's a, a huge credit to our Park Board and the, the effort that they put in trying to figure out, how do we put it into a plan that we can actually implement?
Yeah, and see, the deal is, is I think we've got to be, I think we've got to have those kind of examples, because in conversations I've had in my office or out in public with citizens in the community, it's easy for me to say, okay, 71% of our assets in our parks are at a Level 3 or worse at best. But then they go, oh, blah, blah, blah. But whenever you go, oh, and by the way, you have no lighting for soccer at Southwest, you're one electrical event away from no lighting at Martin Road, those are the kind of things that are going to make people go, oh, that's things that we need to be, what needs to be done? And so I think that's, that's going to be a big part of it. It's just some of those things people need to hear, exactly what does that 71%? What are some of the things that we're about to lose or have lost?
It's a good transition to John. John, thank you for being at the meeting. Thank you for your service on the Parks and Rec Board. What are your thoughts about all of this?
Well, first of all, it's been my pleasure, and, and I, you guys have been listening into our meetings, I think, because this is, we've been doing this for quite a while, and this is very difficult. First thing I'd like to tell you all is, I take full responsibility that you all don't, do not have a master plan in front of you. Because I was not about to hand you something of, of very low value. And that's really kind of what we were moving towards until I spent some time with Cindy and, and, and the board. Eddie, it's real. It's, it's really real. And as someone that takes this advisory board position seriously, I feel it's my job to advise. And I've spent time with, with my friend Cole and, and Eddie, we met. I don't know any of us, I certainly didn't know how bad it was as a member of this community, as a very active member of the athletics, the parks. Up until we did the mess, the asset management plan, I had no idea. And the more we dug, the uglier it got. And so as we were taking the time to try to get you a document that, that I felt like provided some value and, and a, a vision, Eddie, you're out of vision. Sometimes that vision's hard, though, when I'm worried about turning on the lights, what we're going to do, you know? And that's really kind of what we've been doing. But I just, I just believe that if our community, community knew, they would rally. I, I just, parks, recreation is such a huge part of, of my life, my family's lives. You know, I sit back and I think about, you know, what, what has parks meant to my family over the years? And I think every one of us in this room, every one of us in, in this community, we've taken our kids for picnics, we've done sports. And to not communicate to our community how important and how drastic this is, to me, would be a tremendous disservice. That's why we've kind of slowed this process down. Because I think without that community engagement of the reality of, I mean, I got to tell you, when, when our partner in formulating a master plan says in a meeting, well, are you guys prepared to close your zoo? I swallowed really hard, because I'm not prepared to do that. But, but we've got realities that we have to face as a city. You know, that, I, I think there was, and maybe I misunderstood, but one thing I'd like, that 3.1 to 3.7 a year, that's just to take care of what we have. That, that doesn't take care of the 45 million that's in front of us on the high risk. You know, I've been on the board, you guys, I thank you for the reappointment. I was there when we had to close the Thompson Pool. I don't want to do anything like that again. But you're right, Eddie, we're, we're, we're a transformer away. We've, we've had meetings with XL, we begged them to not replace the transformer so that we could keep our lights on. We don't have lights now that we can turn on in Southwest. You know, we've got bathroom swing sets, I mean, it's all, and it's very real. And I guess I'm to the age now where I don't really have a whole lot of time left to play games. I, I, I'm hoping and praying that we can really actually accomplish some stuff together. As I said before, I really have confidence in the, in the people that I love and work with and go to church with in this community that will step up and say, hey, we need to do better as a community. We need to, I mean, this is on our watch, right? I mean, it doesn't really matter what happened yesterday, what matters is what we're going to do tomorrow. So, I mean, that's my goal, and again, I apologize, that's why we've taken so much time.
So where's the board on this, John? Has the dynamic been pretty unanimous in these conversations and what you think is about to be a part of this master plan, or?
We, we have, we have, a couple of things we've done is we've formed two subcommittees. We have a strategic group, and we have a outreach, I think. The strategic group is, is very, very much on board with this. And as a, a total board, I think everybody is very concerned with the information that's in the asset management plan. We all, we all have that information, we all have talked about that information. But I think even as citizens, I think, I think all of us know what's been taking place, but we're just kind of afraid to maybe, I don't know what, whether we were afraid to make somebody look bad, or, you know, I, I'm past that, we got to fix this. You know, I engage my community just like you do, and nobody knows how bad it is. I mean, Cole and I had a great conversation in his driveway as he was running for office, and, and I think he was kind of shocked, as, as we all were, and when we first saw this. I, I think the, the board is, is, like I said, though, we're not elected officials, you all are. We, we're going to advise, but we're, at the end of the day, we're going to, and that's why we're here, we're, we're going to do what you ask us to do. And, and in that, we're just trying to provide you with good information. And with a vision, Eddie, because, you know, we, for instance, the, the, everybody has an interest in youth sports. There's a lot of tournaments happening, you know, Elk City, where there's a phenomenal complex there, and there's, you know, all of our kids are going all over the, the region. And all I hear is, well, why aren't we doing that in Amarillo?
Absolutely.
And, you know, I'm worried about keeping the lights on at Southwest. And so that's why we're here.
Any questions, council, for John? John, we appreciate you.
Hey, thank you all very much for the opportunity.
I expect you will get an invitation back over the next couple of months, as we really take, take up the reins on this.
Thank you all very much.
Thanks. Cindy, any final comments? Okay.
We appreciate the direction here today. Sounds like we are on the right track with this realistic, you know, frame for the plan. So we will go ahead with the outreach and then wrap up the plan to bring it back for your review and guidance.
Okay, any final comments from the council? Anybody else? Okay. You have what you need, you think, Mr. City Manager?
Yes, ma'am, absolutely.
Okay. Thank you, Cindy, for being here and for all the work you're doing on this. Okay, the next item on the agenda is a Thompson Park Pool update.
Hi, Mayor, we've got Director of Parks and Recreation, Michael Kusheba. We also have Wiley Hicks, who is the person in construction company that is doing the construction on behalf of the city, to walk us through what's currently going on. We'll have questions, answers, comments from me. So, Michael, take it away.
I'm going to keep my portion of it very brief. We've been updating council on a bi-weekly basis about the, the timeline for the pool. Obviously, we've had some weather delays. In the last couple of weeks, we've had some unforeseen material issues that has pushed the deadline to July 23rd. Obviously, I've got Wiley Hicks here, he can kind of walk through more of the details on that.
And it's not the deadline, it's the estimated completion date.
The completion date, yeah.
We're not moving the deadline.
Yeah, the completion date is July 23rd.
So is that going to be the completion date and the open date, or open date differently?
That's the plan, is to open on the 23rd.
Okay.
And then.
We're on like what, Plan G?
Yeah. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, or obviously, we've got Wiley here as well, he'd be happy to answer as well.
I think it would be helpful, just Wiley, if you don't mind, we're not going to grill you, but just a little bit of specifics about some of the supply issues, because we're going to get questions from citizens, we want to be able to give them the right information.
Really, all I can say is, I've never had a year like this, and, and not just on this project, but we've lost, since the beginning of this job, we've lost 42 days to weather. That includes Saturdays, that does not include Sundays, but we've been working six days a week since the job started. We, the last update that we gave was July 4th, weekend of opening, and we had the plaster of the pool scheduled for, starting on June 14th. On June the 10th, at 2:50 in the afternoon, I got an email from the pool company, copied from his supplier, that the material had 10-week delivery. It had been ordered, set aside in April for delivery in time, I actually begin, in the beginning, for Memorial Day. There is a plaster shortage across the country, there's a cement shortage across the country, spray foam insulation, I can go on and on and on. I mean, the, the windows for the ticket booth were ordered April 2nd. I don't even have a delivery date today on when they're going to be here. We'll be able to temporary some stuff in. But we did find an alternate source, had to go through the architect and Michael to get it approved, and they will be on site now, July the 8th. They'll be plastering July, I may be wrong on my dates, let me get my notes. They're going to be plastering starting July 12th, and we'll have water in the pool by the end of that week.
That is helpful, just for us to know that's specific.
It's, I, I've been, I went to work for my dad 41 years ago, 42 years ago in August, and I remember the cement shortage in the early 80s, but this is a everything shortage. I mean, it's workmen, everything. It's, we're lucky, everything, with the exception of the plaster, and the windows are now on site, so hopefully there won't be any more.
That's great. Any questions for Wiley, council?
I don't know how you're doing this with a smile on your face.
It's to keep from crying. I had a, I, I had a meeting this morning with AISD about the same exact subject on Cap Rock High School. We've been out there 18 months, supposed to be finished, you know, a month and a half ago, so I don't know.
And let me tell you, like, when you say there's a shortage on everything, I mean, truly, you mean everything, in the way of, I can't get red traffic paint, and for no, for no reason. You know, like, I can get red paint, but I can't get red traffic paint to paint my fire lanes, you know, so that I can close on time. And there are times where we look at our customers and we say, hey, nobody wants to be done worse than me. So we understand that, like, you want to be done too. You know, we understand that it could have, you had already finished, so.
You know, my crews have been, my crews are, all of my guys are, we, we normally, we normally run 65 to 70 people all the time. Right now, I've got 46. And that includes supervisory people. And I mean, we're working, every one of our crews are working 60 hours a week, and you know what overtime is? Especially on guys that make 25, 30 bucks an hour, it's expensive. But there's nobody out there that, that we can find that want to actually work.
Challenging. Thank you for being here today to give us.
That was easy.
Yeah. Jared, you have a question?
Well, just a quick comment. I, I think there's a lot of city employees in the room that have never, and, and probably Wiley's going to be in the same boat, we've never had a, a facility project come in late, not in my entire career. We're going to do a detailed analysis on it, we're going to have a real clear understanding of things that we can control, if we could have done them different, we'll know. Yes, this is an incredibly unique year. Wiley hit on it, Michael hit on it, Councilmember Stanley hit on it. So, but I, I don't want anybody to think that we're just going to throw out a blanket, this was a tough year, and we're not really going to dig deeper and see if we need to change anything in our, in our protocols for how we deliver facilities. We don't want anybody to think that we're blasé about it. There's a lot of reasons, legitimate reasons, and, and Wiley's been a good partner, the park staff have been driving hard, assistance from facilities at times. So I just want you all to know, and I want our community to know, we're going to, we're going to look at how the whole project went, we're going to see if there's anything we can learn from it. We want to make sure that, that our community that's looking forward to this resource, this asset, this amenity, knows that we're driving as hard as we can, and we're going to learn from it. It is what it is, as far as it's going to be late, we know that. But we just want everyone to know that we're going to learn from it, we're going to apply those lessons, and we're going to make sure that, in, in as much as we can, we're going to control to make sure that those things don't happen in the future. There's, there's some projects that have come in late, and will continue to come in late at times, like street projects and things like that. You can't dry in a road like you can dry in a building. Once you get it dried in, you can keep going no matter what the weather looks like. So, you know, all that, that's kind of a wandering way to say that we're going to have a clear understanding of how we could have done it differently, if there is a way that we could have done it differently, and we'll make sure to apply those lessons learned. It is a unique year.
Okay, anything else on that item?
Are there pools that we have busy?
Yes, Southeast has been extremely busy. Southwest, we've seen a little bit of a decline, but Southeast has been very busy.
And those close when, end of August, or?
After Labor Day, yep.
Okay. Thanks again, Wiley. Moving on to item 1E, City Hall repairs update. Mr. City Moving on to item 1E, City Hall repairs update, Mr. City Manager?
Hi Mayor. We are continuing to have conversations about how to move forward with City Hall. We've got Jerry Danforth, Director of Facilities, to give us a more detailed update and breakdown on costs. I just want to acknowledge that, that we have not yet had that one-on-one conversation with Councilmember Stanley that we wanted to have after the last meeting, or at least we haven't had the, a more detailed breakdown of costs that we will include here. So I want to make sure that Councilmember Stanley knows that, that we did not, we're not looking to undercut any positions on that and I acknowledge that we, we want to have those conversations with him, make sure he's fully up to speed. So it could, he could be a little flat-footed. We'll certainly have a lot more questions, we want to answer those questions, so.
Appreciate that.
And I, I'll just say on the front end too Cole, I mean, it, I think this is great because the four of us have been working on this project for over three years, but it's a real gift to us that you're here on the council now as a citizen who wants to learn, who wants to understand. You represent everybody who's been taking their kids to soccer and running their own businesses for the last three years. And so, you're the perfect person at the table to sit and ask all those questions because you're basically every citizen who wants to make sure that those questions have been asked. So we've asked them and we've gone through that process, but I think one of my husband's favorite sayings is check and double check. You're our double check and you're sitting at the table with us. So we want to make sure we give you every opportunity to ask those questions and you're asking them freshly from the citizen's point of view. So I think that's great.
I appreciate that and I'll try to ask good pointed questions that have real outcomes and not wander. So we'll be effective and efficient, but I am, you know, I am still digging, so it'd be good to go through it again.
All right, Jerry, thank you.
Very good. Mayor, counsel, it's good to address you again on this issue. We did drill down a little differently on this one. The last presentation was a look at your options. This is, really drills down with looking at what do we have on City Hall? What do we need to take a look at? What are critical components? And as we go through this, I'll share kind of the vision that I've received from the city manager and you as a city council, what you wanted to see, what do we need to do? So of course, once again, we're looking at a structure that's 55 years old. We're dealing with equipment that's in here that's 55 years old. When you look in, in, put perspective on it, there's not a lot of houses in town that have a 55-year-old refrigerator in them. So consequently, we're running on a bunch of equipment that does have that kind of age and the infrastructure inside the building does have that kind of age. We have worked at the request of previous councils and this council, do what you can to keep it running and we've been doing that. But with this council, we've been very clear with you that, you know, we've put X number of patches on there, we're getting to the point where we can no longer patch stuff. So when we look at the remodel of the space, as we go through these bullet points, as space gets allocated, changes in scope and size of departments, we're not the same size as we were when this building was built. The council chambers here from time to time, as this council is very aware, is fairly inadequate for what the needs are. So this was part of this number that was created here. We have some asbestos abatement we need to address. And we took a look at 40,000 square feet. This building is actually 82,000 square feet. So we have remodeled some areas, so we didn't want to roll that into the math when we look at this going forward. So if we looked at just remodeling that 40,000 square feet, addressing some of the general issues we've talked about, we're looking at around $8.8 million to do something like that. The ADA requirements, of course, we've all been aware that we only have one, one restroom, public restroom here in the facility that's ADA compliant and that's on the second floor of City Hall here. We do have some problems with our restrooms here. So these numbers reflect demo of the restrooms and the plumbing itself. New fixtures and finishes, new plumbing in the walls and the floors, new lighting and HVAC in those restrooms and of course, we'd have an A&E cost for that. So if we look at, if we want to be in compliance, we're looking at 1.3 to 1.7 for that type of work. Now, where do we get those numbers? Those numbers, obviously through Prop 2, you saw where we remodeled PD 7th floor. We know what the breakout of those numbers were on those, some of our other construction projects. So we take an accumulation of those numbers and, and this is a rough estimate. We haven't done any engineering or architectural work to this point, so what we're using is baseline numbers that we have on fairly current projects that we've been doing. This is one of the restrooms here in City Hall. This picture reflects actually the cast iron pipe is failing under the slab, literally pushing and separating the concrete up. There's a closer view of this same area. Once again, these, some of these pictures are gonna be some of the stuff that we looked at the last time. You see the cast iron and the metal is fatiguing in behind the walls. We've shared pictures with the city manager in the past where our guys have gone to do repairs, P-traps under sinks, they've reached to tighten that up, they had a leak, the whole pipe came out of the wall. So we have some major failures that we have there. A lot of times we'll get complaints over here at City Hall, hey, it smells like sewer gas. A lot of times we'll go in and find that the cast iron pipe is literally split and we can't remove it. So what we do is we put a Band-Aid on it, seal it and then band it. Remodel of the elevators here, if we were to bring the elevators to current standards right now, we're working on the old DC circuits with multiple switch gear that is no longer manufactured. So what we have to do is we have to get rebuilt units to bring them in here to keep them operational. There's a lot of stuff that goes into this. This number reflects, we currently have a bid out for the remodel of the elevators at the police department. This is substantially less than that, but we know in working with our Schindler elevator and with American elevator, we've had those cost estimates, we feel fairly confident that that would be the number that we would be looking at to address elevators here in City Hall. This section here, I need you to pay close attention to because all but one of these items could shut down City Hall for a period of time. When we look at the chiller here at City Hall, the chiller's over 30 years old. It's an R22 system. R22 is being phased out by the federal government, so the cost of R22 right now is running extremely high and it fluctuates rather rapidly. If we were to lose just spring a leak on the refrigeration system here and fix that, be able to fix it, if it was a leak we could fix, we'd be looking at spending probably close to $10,000 to $12,000 just buying gas for the system. So it's, it's a major issue. If it does go down, the problem that we've got here at City Hall is the IT system will go down too because it will overheat because we can't keep it cool. The next system that we talk about is the boiler system here with four new boilers that we're looking at and duct work because the duct work for the old boilers doesn't meet what the new standards would be. So as all of you are aware, when we had our big freeze this year that was substantial, had we not been able to procure a boiler from Civic Center and move over here, we moved it over two days before that freeze hit. Had we not been able to do that, the reality is, we would have frozen City Hall. We would have had chiller loops, there would have been, I couldn't have put enough temporary heat in here to keep this building from freezing. We were in a situation, we were in pretty dire straits. So we avoided catastrophe there, but it was within two days of hitting us and would have completely shut us down. Cooling tower replacement. The cooling tower is 27 years old and failing and I'll have photos that shows you that here shortly. Typical life of a cooling tower is 15 to 20 years. So you're definitely getting your money's worth out of your equipment here within the facility. I think you've extended it past what reasonable expectations are. Sanitary pump system, we kind of covered this in the last one and I'll have some photos for that as, as well. Cast iron pipe feeding those sanitary storage tanks and the tanks themselves are starting to fail. Fan coil units that are original to the building construction here, they're 55 years old. Like I said, their design, their efficiency is, is, for a lack of better phrase, extremely lacking what we would want to accomplish here. Replacement parts don't exist for them. We've found ways to modify them to keep them running, but they are a area that is, is a major concern to us here. The loop system replacement for the hot and cold loop. Now, hot and cold loop, just for a little basic clarification, the fan coil units that we're talking about, they either get hot water in the wintertime to keep the building warm and air blows across those fan coils, or we switch the valves and then it runs cold water through there. Major parts of our loop system here within this structure are actually galvanized pipe. The fact that we're dealing with galvanized pipe, a lot of that has started to fail. It's actually plugging it up. A lot of times there's sections of the building that will actually not have heating in the, in the summer until we actually go and blow those lines down. The fact that we're having to blow those lines down and purge all that trash out of them tells us we're getting internal failures on those systems. We're just rolling the dice on that. Basement drainage system and cast iron is failing. There again, we'll go through that and then we'd be looking at some engineering costs for that. I have $3 to $5 million on that, depending on what the scope is and depending on what the failures are internally inside the walls. There's a lot of that. We have very good assumptions of what's there, but we don't know until we actually open them up. So that number could, could be all over the place. So as we go through, this photograph right here, it's actually a small video. The sewer lines in the basement backed up. That sewer's run, that sewer material actually coming up underneath the main system for IT department. Fortunately, we got notified quick enough, we could deal with it. But one of the challenges of that, that particular area, because the cast iron's failing, you can't run a sewer snake through that cast iron. If I do, I'm afraid that I'm gonna punch a hole through cast iron and then I completely shut down.
Okay, got it, there you go.
Yeah, I'm afraid that it's bubbling up there, what you're seeing on that gray spot there at the end.
Yeah, you can't just hear the sound is what you're missing, which kind of brings the fragrance with it.
But yeah, I didn't bring any scratch and sniff with me for this one.
So that's our phone system, our IT, I mean, all of the data systems that are stored in the basement.
It would, yeah, and it would have shut down the entire IT system throughout the This is the sum that's down there that I referred to, the cast iron's failing on it. There's actually two of those, two 700 gallon tanks. So if your cast iron that feeds into those is thicker walls than what those tanks are, you can imagine what the tanks are like. This is the boiler system, that's the one that we procured from Civic Center that says power on it. The other one with the smoke on the bottom is the older unit that's running at about 20% efficiency right now. Obviously, there's two spots that are wide open for two additional boilers. That's the chiller system that's sitting there at 30 years and if you'll notice the corrosion on the piping coming into the chiller itself, where we're starting to see the fatigue there as well. There's the generator that runs the city in an emergency. It's a 75 KVA generator. It will run just the bare essentials here in the building. It does not run the chiller plant. It's not big enough to run the chiller plant. It will run the boilers if it has to and it will keep the switches working for IT so that the phones stay operational. But it will not fully run any of the backup systems past that. So it's way undersized for what the city needs actually for City Hall. This actually happened last week just before City Council. This patch is, thanks to Utilities Department, they got out there and got it fixed, got it addressed, was actually the manhole corroded and collapsed. So you had a big sinkhole in front of City Hall. Next, when we look at other things, if, if we stay in this building and address this building, this is the next thing that would need to be addressed. Windows, lighting, windows need to be energy codes, they don't currently do that. The lighting, we have a bunch of fluorescent lighting. We would be advantageous and need to switch to LED lighting fluorescents that are no longer available. Generator that we referenced earlier and then building automation, this is something we need to, and you will start seeing more and more conversations coming from me on building automation and security. Right now, the city is, the reason facilities operates with the size staff that it does is because we are currently the third largest in the state of Texas in using and over INTEC building automation, where we monitor building security, we monitor all of the heating and cooling in spaces, all of that's done through the facilities department. The only two that are bigger than us is actually AT&amp;T and University of Texas. So in having that and having that fully functional allows us to operate at a more streamlined staff. What we have inside the City Hall right now is 20 years old. We're no longer able to get components to repair this. We have to actually send them off to have them be rebuilt. City Hall's front entrance, I'm sure most of you are aware of what we're dealing with and I'll have some photos and we'll go over that. We need to address some issues that we've got there and ADA approaches. What we have is concretes, there's been several repairs and this, this picture kind of reflects it and it still exists out there right now. The concrete isn't, isn't structurally sound like what it used to be. The problem is, is penetration of water in concrete actually makes it start spalling after years and then to put any kind of a, for a lack of a better phrase, a mastic or plaster on it, it won't adhere to it because the concrete will actually fail and that new section will completely fall off. So that's what you're looking at currently there in front of City Hall. Flood control and structural on the east side. And as we go through this, I want to point out, the first two pictures that I'll show you actually are from the airport when they, we had the 100-year event at the airport. That was a six-inch rain in less than an hour's time. Fortunately, it happened, unfortunately, it happened for the airport, but fortunately for us, it didn't happen here downtown. Had it happened here, we would have had some catastrophic issues here at this building. Currently, when we see that a large rain event is going to be happening here downtown, you will see facility staff actually come over with sandbags and plug the bottom doors of City Hall to keep the flooding from coming in there. We have had in the last 10 years that I've been here, three different events that actually flooded the basement here at City Hall. That's what happened at the airport after a six-inch rain and that's at your drop-off. Keep in mind what's sitting there at the airport, you see the parking lots dry there, but the basement at the airport had eight feet of water in it. We're in a situation here, if you'll look in retrospect, the ramp that goes down the east side of City Hall, Mayor, as you referenced, this is where the governor had to go to come into the building. If we get that kind of a rain event there, there is no way for me to turn the water This is why we're starting to see some of the structural issues that we have here at City Hall as far as the structural issues on the concrete. I have not presented you any numbers to deal with that because we don't know the entire scope of it. This is what we're looking at where the concrete has failed. You see the rebar is actually corroding and falling apart inside the concrete. So as I, as I stated earlier, I don't have numbers for you on the structural remediation that would take a structural engineer and quite a great deal of time to get that clarified for you. What I have shown you is some actual costs that you're looking at going forward. IT of course has some numbers in here that are relative numbers and if we do IT upgrades just as is where is here in the current building, we know that you're gonna spend at least that $320,000. If we have to relocate to another structure, which if any of those mechanical systems that we talked about do fail, we would have to relocate because I couldn't function in the building. You're looking at substantially more money there. And then of course, we would be dealing with architectural engineering fees at that time as well. This is on the northeast side of City Hall. What you're looking at is a section of the, of the building that has actually sunk three inches there. And you can see where the slabs are actually pulling away from the building. So here's where we're at, kind of bullet points going down through that, all those different sections. Like I said, keep in mind that section that says chiller, boiler and mechanical systems, any of those failures could shut down City Hall and City Hall functions. And I'll be happy to address any questions you've got.
Questions for Jerry?
Well, and I think one thing we didn't touch on. Well, and I think one thing we didn't touch on is, and to Councilmember Stanley's question, last meeting was, what about a deeper dive on just the repairs to the facility to get a few more years out of the facility? If you go to the, Jennifer, we go to the itemized list, the renovation costs for existing City Hall is the next last slide. Yeah, right there. Obviously, we wouldn't, and, and I'm just going to go through a, just real quick and dirty math and on what those costs, what a range for those costs would be. Remodeling spaces is not something we would do. Remodeling the restrooms for ADA compliance, we would have to do based on the amount of work we would be doing to the facility to trigger compliance with ADA on that. So we'd have to do that. We would not remodel the elevators, we could make those last for a few more years. Chiller, boiler, cooling tower, all that stuff would need to be done. Front entrance upgrades would not need to be done. Window, lighting, security, most of that stuff would not need to be done. However, it would probably be wise to replace our generator with a bigger generator that could handle a bigger portion of the building, estimated around $500,000. Flood control structure would not have to do that, although that is always a continuing risk. We've been able to manage that thus far, and I think we could manage it for, for, you know, a handful more years. IT costs would need to do that. It's, that's a necessary thing to, to keep going. We've been postponing that for a number of years, waiting on a decision on what's going to happen long-term with City Hall. Relocation costs, there would not be the full relocation costs because we wouldn't be doing the full thing. However, the installation of the chiller, boiler, and other heavy equipment would necessitate the shutdown of the facility for a short time. So that'd be estimated around three months, maybe a million dollars or so.
Right.
On that. And then there'd be a, an amount of architectural engineering costs, and we wouldn't know exactly what that would be, but estimated around $400,000 just for calculation purposes. In that scenario, if we took those smallest numbers to create a, a low estimated cost and took the bigger numbers to, to create the high estimated cost, it costs somewhere between six and a half to 8.6 million dollars to do a, a stopgap project that would allow us to, to continue using the facility with reliability, understanding that we do have exposure for things like flood and maybe a couple of other things. But, but by and large, we could continue to use, use the facility for a handful more years. And I'm using handful more years as a placeholder, because it really depends on what.
How many?
Well, it's.
Three, four?
Three to seven, probably, Jerry?
It depends on what the city's function is and what the council's direction is at that time, because obviously, the city's growing, and so departments are growing and the needs on this building are growing. Is this building large enough to accommodate those needs long-term? That's something you've got to tell me what you want to accomplish with that.
Outside factors that would affect that are other projects like Civic Center project if something was to happen, understanding that we are, I'm not saying that, that is, although it's something that the community wants, it's just something we haven't been able to find the right, you know, scope and price tag. Inflation is going to be a variable, and, you know, there's people in the room that have a much better handle on that, you and Councilmember Stanley among the front, front of that list. So there's a number of things that are going to play in there as far as what's the best way forward. We just wanted to give more detail on the short-term renovation or repair costs, the long-term renovation costs at City Hall, and, but we didn't focus on Emerald Hardware on this conversation.
No.
So Jared, I, I was not getting all of that that you said at first, I'm sorry to ask you to repeat some of that. You were going to run through that list of 10 things or however many things right here and just tell me absolutely must be done, absolutely must be done. Could you quickly do that again?
On the, on the short-term repair, it'd be bullet number two.
Okay.
Bullet number four.
Thank you.
500,000 on bullet number six. Bullet number eight, and approximately a million on bullet number nine, and approximately, estimated 400,000 on bullet number 10.
Okay, thank you.
So there would be ADA compliance projects, boiler, chiller, cooling tower, storage tank, sump system, all that. Generator, IT costs, temporary relocation costs, and architectural engineering costs.
So you don't have to address the front entrance upgrades?
The front entry upgrades, we would be addressing the safety issues that are out there, like the steps, like the failed sewer ca, uh, manhole cover out in the drive and some other things with more long-term repair than what we've already done. But we would not be doing the awning and a couple of other things that, that would be, that would help usability of the facility and would facilitate the ADA entrance.
To answer your question, we're still going to spend about $200,000 on repairs, just to repair what you've got there, yeah.
But it doesn't make it ADA compliant though?
No, it will.
It, it is currently ADA compliant. The ramp comes, yeah, from, from the plaza, the ramp comes from there.
The entry is ADA compliant. The main entry on the front. Our other entries are not, and the, well, actually, the west entry is.
It is.
But the restrooms and some of the interior spaces are not.
Do you all need a minute to digest, you want to ask questions?
So a couple of questions for you.
Sure.
How many restrooms are we remodeling?
You would end up remodeling actually all four of them. The problem is, is the plumbing, of course, is interconnected from floor to floor to floor. So we would have to address all four floors regardless. Even though the second level is ADA compliant, it was a, it was a, it was a patch that it would, it would look totally different from what your, your new ones would look like. So we would recommend doing all four of them when we did them.
So the reason that that works out so much per unit would be because of the additional plumbing between the floors?
Yes, and what.
That's $300,000 a restroom?
Yeah, because you're looking at new fixtures, new, new divider panels, you're actually looking at new sinks, you're going to have sinks that are actually placed at, in all, all of the sinks, all of the restrooms would have an ADA sink as well as the standards. You would go from where some of these are actually four commodes, you'd be going to three because you're going to have to move the plumbing over to get the ADA space. The turning radiuses are going to have to be adjusted inside there. And then with all of that torn apart, you're, you're going to have to go back with a new finish in there of some sort. And so we figured tile in there because it's more durable, but that's, that's where you're looking at, those, those units per, that cost per unit per floor. And that's very comparable to what we paid at PD on that remodel.
On the, the chiller, boiler, cooling, I guess that'd be bullet point number four.
Mm-hmm.
Have you looked at any options to do like an inline sump pump and bypass that old tank and then set a tank just in the basement up, up above grade?
Well, the problem is, is I don't have the square footage down in the basement to do one there. Currently, the footprint down in the basement, I could abandon one, but that throws all the risk on one, we currently have two. So it throws all the risk on one, and in some occasions, one is not enough to handle the daily function inside the City Hall.
Okay.
And so that's one reason we haven't looked at it. Now, that section over there in the IT where that flooded, we actually looked at what's the option there, can we go in there and saw cut that? The problem is, is I've got to shut down IT when I do that, shut down all of those systems, and then saw cut a hole in the floor and then put a pump system to pump it over to those other two tanks.
Okay, a lot of logistics there, I know. So 100 to 200,000 dollars to redo the steps out front is what we're saying.
Right.
I, I understand we have a 910,000 dollar ticket potentially there, but just for the steps that we're, we're dealing with on the, the fall hazard.
Correct.
We agree 100 to 200 somewhere in there?
Yeah, what we would look at, Mr. Stanley, is probably go in there and saw cut out the first four steps. That's where, at the lower elevation, that's where this, we see the biggest concrete failure. Take those out completely, repour those and retile them.
The generator improvement, I, I know you went over that with me, the 500,000 dollar for something large enough to, to function there. So giving, given your experience with current costs, if we, if we built a new construction building, can, can we estimate somewhere around 250 to 300 dollars per square foot on 80,000 square feet? I mean, that'd be 20 million to 24 million dollars somewhere in there?
You're, you're close to that, and then you add in your FFNE, that bumps that number up a little bit because of your furniture and a lot of your, the other number that's not rolled into that cost per square foot is your IT number, depending on what that IT structure looks like. The current number that we represented to you on the Emerald Hardware building at the last presentation had all of that included.
Okay.
So would, would the 250 to 300, possibly 325, once you load in FFNE, would that include demo and utility relocations and things like that?
No, when you look at, that's, that's a total separate, that's not part of the building construction itself. A parking lot, downtown streetscape, downtown standards, when you look at downtown streetscape, that's basically running between 200 and 250,000 dollars per block face. And so you're looking at multiple block faces that you would have to be doing streetscape as well.
Yeah, so all I'm doing, just to be real upfront, all I'm doing is laying out different common sense options that we're looking at here in the way of, we, we have lots of different things that we need to look at, lots of variables and a moving target in a volatile market. So when we look at that, I mean, if we had a place, and I have an identified one, where we had a big open space and we wanted to build a new construction building, we could potentially be 10 million dollars less to do a new construction building with everything brand new, no logistical issues, no downtime on moving the family from one home to the next, so to speak, and, and still save 10 million dollars of our taxpayers', you know, monies here or revenues. So remodeling this structure as we talk through this and bringing it totally up to where we want to get another 30 to 50 years out of this becomes less and less desirable as we look at more and more options. Now, in the same breath, I'm saying that if we look at the Emerald Hardware store, the same way we're looking at this critically, you know, is it smart to move over there? Well, is it smart to move there? And I'm not saying that I know, I'm just, I'm asking the question, that's a 35 million dollar ticket and comes with a lot of the same, you know, issues that, that we don't know here. And I think you have a better grasp on what you're doing over there and, and kind of the, the structure and the, the bones of that, that system or that building. But looking at this, I'm just laying out the options in the way of, we are learning more the more we dig, and I know I'm learning more. Hopefully, the citizens are as well. I know a lot of you guys have been down this road and, and we're going to make you walk it again, but we appreciate that. And so I, I appreciate you taking the time to, to answer some of that. My last question to you would be, as the Emerald Hardware relocation has been the first item that we looked at in like potentially an option, that's a three-year lookout, is that correct?
I, I don't think it should take that long to do that job, no. I think you're looking at about a two-year project.
Two-year project? So one more time, if I'm looking at 6.3 million dollars as we added up kind of what we had here, Jared, on.
6.5 to 8.6 is what I heard.
Okay.
That's what I wrote down.
I had 6.3, and that was just with the numbers that we were talking about, like stairs and some things, we probably, I'm probably cutting a few things. So 6 million plus, we're not saying we need to spend 6 million dollars to stay here for three years. So what are we saying that we need to spend to stay here for two to three years, why we decide on this process and why we relocate?
Well, and, and basically, all of these numbers are presented to you because you're the one that's assuming the risk. You're aware of what the problems are with the mechanical systems here. I don't want you walking into this with your eyes half-opened or, I, I, I'm not giving you the worst case scenario, I'm giving you the real scenario, here's where you're at. If any of those mechanical systems fail, I'm shutting down City Hall for at least three months. Okay? So understand that those systems also are 55 years old, so it's not like we haven't done all we can to keep these things operational. We absolutely are doing all we can to keep these operational. And there, I'm not saying that I can't keep it running for another two years, I'm, but I'm not saying that it's going to make it and I can pull it off. I just, there's so much of this, if that cast iron pipe fails, I have no choice but to shut down City Hall because I can't have raw sewage inside City Hall, so I've got to deal with it.
And I think that.
So that's really where we're at, is I'm, I'm telling you, these are, these are the risks you've got, and this equipment is at the end of its life.
The hope would be that, that we would be able to keep the facility running without any catastrophic failures for the period that it would take to design and construct, whether it's Emerald Hardware or wherever. But we are. As time goes forward, our risk, you know, and I don't know the, the steepness of the slope, our risk goes up. I think that's a logical assumption. The, the, the hope is that we wouldn't have to spend a terrible amount of money to, you know, repair failures or to address any, any, any challenges that happened during that period. We estimate before, before the end of the year, we could have design completed, and then construction, depending on when we started that, would take roughly 18 months to renovate a facility, and it would be kind of like what you were talking about, moving all at once to a new facility without any impact on current facility related to the construction. Now, we may have a chiller issue or a boiler issue or, or other bio solids or biomaterial down in the basement or something like that. So that, that doesn't mean that we won't have additional costs, we would try to manage that just like we've been doing and band-aiding things for the last few years. If we were to move forward without a, a plan certain on, on City Hall on a departure date, we probably would be looking at something in that six to eight million dollar range, just do enough things to, to address City Hall for that shorter but indeterminate period of time. I, I don't know, you know, how long so, those projects would, would get us in this facility, but they would definitely get us farther along than what the plan is right now to just get us, hopefully get us enough, far enough down the road to move.
Yeah, and I think the, the best example truly is the boiler system. You know, we came within two days of a catastrophe here. Had we not been able to get it up and running, we would have froze every line inside this building, we wouldn't have made it through. I had too many other structures throughout the city that we were in that scenario, the A to Z building that we bought for fire garage, it was in that, we had 22 space heaters inside that building trying to keep it from freeze, and it still froze. So I can't imagine 80,000 square foot if I couldn't have got it in here. I did check to see if there was an emergency boiler system, just as a point of fact, to see if we could get an emergency heat system in here just in case. We were told it was 30 days out and it was going to cost us right at 48,000 dollars a month to set it out in the parking lot.
I think it's interesting on that one, and it's probably because of Jerry's crystal ball or something, but he came to me to suggest and propose a temporary solution to pull that boiler from the Civic Center and put it over in City Hall, but that was a good six weeks to a month before that freeze actually happened. We didn't know that it was coming, he didn't know it was coming, but just happened to finish that relocation a couple of days before it happened. Lucky or Jerry being smart, you know, one of those things is, is true, but it does illustrate a narrowly dodged, you know, bullet almost in a Matrix style.
So it would be fair to, to say like conservative approach would be, you know, you could spend a million to 2 million dollars over the next couple of years, two to three years, regardless of whatever else we're doing, if we had some things that continue to trend the way you're, you're looking.
Absolutely.
And we're looking at 6 million dollars to want to stay here for a while.
If you want to stay here, you're going to spend that much no matter what.
Sure.
If you want to try, it's, it's the risk reward deal again, like, like we talked about, we're going to roll the, we're going to roll the dice and I'm going to do everything to keep it functional at the least amount of cost.
And I don't know, I don't know that anyone else is saying, I'm not saying that we should look at spending 33 million dollars to renovate and totally refurbish this existing structure. That's not what I'm saying. So I'm just saying not yet.
So Jerry, just to clarify, the numbers that I thought we had seen before were 28 million to do what was needed in existing City Hall, 31 million to renovate Emerald Hardware. And have I, have you gotten updated numbers, Cole? Because you just now said 33 to stay here and 35 for Emerald Hardware?
That's correct, I'm looking at the high side here of 33 and a half.
He's looking at the high side numbers. We're looking at, if we just replace like for like, if we don't modernize, and I'll use the chiller system as an example. If you tell me as a city council, we're staying in this building, I'm probably not going to talk to you about a chiller, I'm probably going to talk to you about something like what I did in the Sims building, which is a multi-system, which if, if the chiller goes down, I'm completely down. If I do a multi-system, a multi-system has multiple compressors, multiple fan coils, I can lose a section and still keep 80% of the building operational. I'm going to look at those kind of options. If you say this is where we're going to live for the next 10 years, then I'm going to bring you the best options. The numbers you have reflected in front of you give you both the cheapest version and some of those adjustments if we go to a different style and you say, this is the building I want to be in.
And then in that same line of thinking, you are not including some structural repairs that you're forewarning us of, so.
There is no structural numbers included in there.
33 million could grow, you know, and I won't speculate on what it would be, but we're also not talking about some of the things we could take with us. So if we were conservative and we said, hey, So if we were conservative and we said, hey, let's go ahead and buy a, you know, a $500,000 generator, that can be relocated and utilized at the next building. Same way if we were to develop some sort of storage tank, you know, inline sump pump, something like that, just to take care of some of the catastrophic issues so we're not caught.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, and we have those contingencies in place. We're ready to move quickly. That's, you know, Jared and I talk about that quite frankly. If this, if this happens, this is what we've got to do. We're aware of it, but it's, you know, we know these problems exist. We know the age that we're dealing with in this infrastructure. We know we're at the end of the life on a lot of these components. So what do we do, what's our next step? So you're looking, you know, to answer your question or statement, however you want to put it, Mr. Stanley is, yes, if we stay in this building, you're going to spend that six to eight million dollars no matter what. And that's without refurbishing anything in the building. That's just to keep the heartbeat going. Past that, you're looking at a new structure and then we're talking a total different design and a total different function in that new building that would meet current energy codes. The reason that the Amarillo Hardware Building is easy to look at, it's strictly a shell. There's nothing there. Everything's exposed. There's no walls hardly at all. We can see everything inside there. In this building, we can't do that until we start doing demolition. I can't tell you everything that's behind the walls in the restrooms here at this building. Hopefully, it's not an old facilities employee, but...
Or all that money we need to fund Parks and Rec? We're going to find Keshuba knocking holes in walls? Okay, Jerry, inflation is something that we're hearing a lot about. It's, there's no way for you to really boil that down. But these numbers that you're giving us, how have you accounted for what we think is an oncoming of inflation?
These numbers here on this, I think we're very close on these and I think Mr. Stanley's in his business realizes that too. We're very close on these right now. We don't see, when we're watching the trends right now, and I watch those trends very closely, we're looking at steel numbers. Steel numbers have plateaued. They're looking at if the tariffs drop off, which they're pushing, the tariffs drop off, we could see steel prices fall another 12% by the end of the year. So we're looking at, towards the end of the year, we're looking at some numbers starting to come back down because the supply chains will be filling back up. A lot of that's controlled by the Fed, so I can't give you an, I don't have that crystal ball. But I am looking at what we're seeing as far as lumber numbers, what we're looking at as far as, I think, concrete. I don't think you'll see it trend down. I think concrete, historically, when it rises, it stays up there. It doesn't go back down. But when you're looking at bulk commodities like steel, any kind of poly products, all of those will follow the markets. And right now, the markets are looking like the supply chains are filling up. We should start seeing it. It'll stay, it'll stay high through the summer and I think we'll start seeing it trend down late this fall, early winter.
Councilmember Stanley, what do you think about inflation with regard to these numbers?
Oh, I agree with Jerry. I think that, you know, some of the most logical, well-thought-out, explained, you know, economists out there that make it easy for me to understand is we are seeing kind of the effect of greed. So we are seeing some people that have overloaded on their, their supply. They are now going to have to come down. We will see a correction. We think that, you know, in the fall and over the winter, you're going to see everything start to trend downward. Now, with labor and inflation and cost of living and different goods that aren't construction-related, we think those are going to drive the cost back up. And so if we see a little bump and a bounce, then that's where you're looking two to three years down the road where, man, that's a really big deal. That's, that's a, you know, if we had the shovel ready and we could put it in the ground yesterday, we want to do that as we look over the next six months. If we're looking two to three years down the road, we want to be way more cautious and conservative because we may really get hit on the tail end of a lot of those really high inflated costs.
So counsel, here's where I think we are then. I don't know about you guys, I'm hearing a lot from citizens, well, not a lot, but I am, citizens, a few citizens have engaged, reached out, said, we want to know more about the process counsel has gone through and be part of this decision. So I kind of am wanting to get input from you guys. It's not an action item, but just, is there guidance that you can give Jared on where we go from here? Do we want a community solutions meeting on this where community can come? And, you know, we maybe could just open it up? Jerry could do his presentation, they could hear it? And then we could hear from people who have questions, concerns about City Hall? Is that an approach that you guys want to take? What do you think? Let me go, while you're thinking about that, then I think part two is telling Jared, when do we want to do a meeting to decide on this as a counsel? There is time urgency in the information that Jerry has presented us. There's market urgency in making a decision on, do we go now or do we wait? So I think, I think that Jared needs some guidance from us as a counsel on whether or not we're feeling urgency to move and how and when we want to engage citizens on it. So you want to share your thinking on that? Howard?
What are you talking about? Going to Amarillo Hardware?
I, we're talking about, when do y'all want to make that decision? I think we are, we are down two options. Options are, stay here, make the bare minimum, bare minimum repairs. Stay here, make some longer-term repairs. Stay here, do it all. Move to another facility. The other facility that we have previously identified was Amarillo Hardware. But, you know, if, if, if any of you want the city to look at another option, now is the time to say that.
I think we need to make a move. What I'm hearing on this building, and I hear the cost of Amarillo Hardware, that's the only option, other option we have. I think we need to go that direction. Now, whether we have a meeting to get public input, that's another, another issue. It wouldn't hurt anything to do it, but I don't know that it's necessary.
Okay, so I hear that you're hearing urgency.
Yes.
Okay.
Well, and I, I want to, you know, I respect where Howard's coming from and I respect the time, energy and effort from any of our involvement, from our citizens. And so with that, I think what I'm hearing him say is if, if we have a direction that we're going to push for, then I don't know that it's beneficial to have community involvement unless we are willing to listen and take into account that, you know, what we all come to, we're all going to entertain and everything right now is on the table and that we don't necessarily have a certain directive right now. So if we already do have a directive, we've already taken steps in a certain direction, I don't want to offer up that as an option to our community and then it feel like we were deaf. And so I'm saying that in a real respectful way. I'm not saying that in the wrong way. I'm just saying that if he feels urgency about that and I want to push the brake pedal, then, then we've got to decide that amongst ourselves, I think, before we would try to get people together to help us.
Do you want to push the brake pedal? Do you want to go next, just kind of in sharing your thinking?
I do and I appreciate that you guys are, you know, continuing to go back over this. But every time we've talked about this, I think it's become a little more clear. We've noticed a trend on some of our costs increasing as we're estimating. We've also noticed a few other good things come out, everything from new construction, you know, being a potential option and some other things. And so I think it'd be very helpful to have a community solution conversation as long as it is productive in the way that we can show and that we are entertaining all options.
So, okay, now back that up and let me just ask about, are you feeling urgency about this project? Let me frame it that way, since we worked off of an urgency type of comment to the left.
On this particular project, I think the realistic side is it's a three-year deal. And so I think a lot of your costs will be within that third year. I don't know how much we could prepay and pre-buy for. I think my urgency comes in looking at a inflated correction after a downturn. And so hopefully, we will realize some cost decreased as it's pertaining to construction. But I think my nervousness comes in two to three years from now. So if this was something we could get done in the next six months, I would feel like Howard. Because of the duration of this project, I think it's, we should be more cautious.
Okay, so Jerry, when would we be starting construction? Just to play off of that comment.
I, it, in conversations with Jared, I feel like we should use the same format that we used when we built the MPEV. We enter in with an architect, we sign the contract with them, we get to 30 to 35% design documents with a GMP and then we lock up a general contractor as a CMAR, just like what we did with the MPEV, allow the contractor to negotiate with both the city and with the architect in that design to make sure we're staying within that approved budget and deliver accordingly. And I think, you know, depending on, you know, the contracts, I think we could move fairly quickly on it.
And to, for everyone's benefit, to address Jerry's acronyms, we would bring on the architect, start design, get to 35% or 40% design documents, bring on the construction manager at risk, the CMAR, have them help us get through completion of design using buildability as one of their primary contributions to the process, which makes it a cheaper product, project total overall because you don't have design that didn't take into account buildability. Then you build things, you realize you've got to make a correction. There's, there's change orders and things that make it more expensive. So that's why you see a less expensive project through a construction manager at risk delivery style. Then, once they've been a part of the project, you establish the guaranteed maximum price, which is the GMP. Then you go forward and do the project. And you can even be refining final design documents while you're under construction for future phases of the project. Allows you to move faster, allows you to be a little more efficient than design, bid, build, something like that.
Cole, am I hearing you say that you, you think this building's future is not worth, is not the right investment? I don't want to put words in your mouth, but just, can you speak directly about what you're thinking? I think you bring a lot of value to this conversation with your industry expertise.
I don't think I have any sentimental, you know, ties to this building. So I think if we looked at it and we said, look, 50 years from now, we want to still be in this building and have gotten all our money out of it, it'll cost us another $40 million. I would rather spend 24 million and have a 50-year new construction building in a different location. And that's an easy, that's an easy answer if that was the choice before me.
That's a stewardship answer.
Right, that, that is not the choice before me. So with a volatile market, with other priorities that we're looking at, Parks and Rec did a great job of giving us a good understanding of, you know, how dire we are in need of taking care of those items. You know, can we afford to rush this process, hurry along, pick something that potentially would be 10 million, 15 million dollars more than we had to spend and not have that 10 or 15 million dollars to put into Parks and Rec? So in factoring the overall economic impact and costs to everything that we have to decide on in a budget from a cumulative standpoint, I think it pays to go slower and look at all of the options.
And spend the 7 million, I mean, how do you address the urgency of the, there was a, let's see, the slide that said mechanical systems, where Jerry said if any one of these goes down, City Hall operations will shut down?
So I would not...
How would you address that?
I would not feel like I stewarded the money poorly if I spent $2 million of the citizens' money to put in a new generator, take care of our boiler issue to the best of our extent, go ahead and take care of the steps up front for our safety hazard and then potentially invest some money in a massive sump pump system that could pump that basement out to where it couldn't get more than three inches of water in it. And so if I were to spend that amount of money and get myself in a place where I've avoided the catastrophic risk, then I think that's money well-spent. And in saying that, I may have only spent a million of the 2 million because I may sell all that equipment later on the market or I may reuse it or it may become an asset for the city long-term.
Where, walk us through where you got that $2 million number.
So if we go back here to my last page on my cheat sheet...
Renovation costs?
So I wouldn't do any of the remodel of the spaces, I, you know, short of the carpet...
You wouldn't do the restrooms, the ADA compliance?
Trip over when I have to walk out front, I'm okay with it. So I wouldn't do the ADA restrooms because until we do more than 50% of the square footage here, we're not triggering upon ourselves anything that we hold our public to. So I, as a contractor, don't update your restrooms if I'm remodeling less than 50% of your business. So because of that, then we're in compliance and I would just stay in compliance and be okay with that. I wouldn't do the elevators because they function. I think we have other elevators that may be in more need elsewhere in town. You know, the chiller, boiler, cooling tower, I'm going to tell you that we should be able to look at an above-ground storage tank, some sort of inline pump and a few other needs there for hopefully a million, million-two. Now, I'm speculating and I'd be happy to go out and kind of do some homework, but that's not what I'm volunteering and I understand that you do your job very well. Not trying to do your job, but I am a speculator, so I appreciate you letting me go.
So instead of three, that covers the chiller, that covers everything and you're 1 to 2 million?
Uh huh, 1 to 1.2. Front entrance upgrades, I'd spend $100,000 on the steps. I may demo all the tile and just lose it all and just, you know, pour concrete out there and leave concrete. Window lighting, security, I wouldn't do any of those other than the generator. And that, once again, that $500,000 generator is probably $400,000 worth of value a year or two from now if we needed to sell it, if we never used it. And then IT costs, I'm not addressing those for you. I'm just preventing water from damaging your IT by probably putting in, I don't know, Jerry, you think a couple hundred thousand dollars for a massive sump pump and something that could be readily fixed, that could pump out that basement and keep up?
Yeah, we need to be, are you talking about from the storm or from the collapsing sewer lines?
Well, obviously, we have insurance for a reason. And so if we had an insurance claim, we may actually be in a better position one time if we had a, you know, a massive flood. But in the way of taking care of our city and keeping everything functioning...
Bad news there. The city is self-insured because we, you saw the premiums on...
We do have facilities insurance and the deductible. Laura, can you hit us with it, or is Wes in here?
Yeah, Wes is here.
Wes, can you come up here and hit us with the deductible stuff on that?
While he's walking up, all I'm talking about is if a tornado takes the entire building, like we have some catastrophic coverage, I believe.
Yes.
We do. We, we have various deductibles though. So if you're talking wind and hail, it's 5% total insured value of the building. So it's a big deductible.
It's a big deductible.
City Hall's 20 million. The flood insurance is 250,000, up to 50 million dollars. But, you know, you can't, you can't claim flood for like the sewer that we know about. We're going to have trouble with that. If it's rain, we would be okay.
I just wanted to point out that the deductibles are goofy, goofy is the wrong word, are very challenging topics, especially when it gets to wind and hail. I know you weren't talking about that, you're talking about floods, so...
Sure. If a tornado were to wipe the whole building down, it's a different deductible. But flood from a busted sewer line is going to be, we'll have to go into negotiations with the insurance company there.
So let me roll back my comment because all I'm doing is just showing you my massive expertise in deductibles as they pertain to insurance for large structures. So I understand it's complicated. I'm not trying to, to, to tell you that that is my plan. My plan is to put in common sense practices that will, you know, hopefully minimize, if not eliminate. Some of these things that we're saying are the reason, the reason we're going to make these decisions to spend this money. So once again, if, if we ran this together and we spent $2 million, and that's just a number I've thrown out there, and I don't, I don't, did you run a ticket on where I'm at?
You're at 2 million.
So we're close.
Although I didn't hear anybody say for, you threw out 200,000 for a pump system?
Yeah, 250, who knows?
Okay.
So I'm already over budget, but that's, that's normal in construction, just like the other 10 I'm running. So I am, I'm enjoying the conversation. I'm not trying to waste anyone's time and I think that at this point, I probably have done as good a job as I can to just tell you where my mind is. Now, that being said, I care about where Howard's mind is. And so if he feels differently than I do, then back to the issue of, do we want to have a community solution meeting? I don't want to have a meeting if it's not productive. And I don't want to have insight and, and comments and research and discovery if we're not going to put some of those things into practice and go, man, that's a good idea. And that all hinges on the urgency, I believe.
Yeah. Okay. I think that, those are great comments. Thank you. Place three? Let's wait, let's, let's finish hearing from-
My urgency is we should have started on this a year ago. We're a year behind. That's, that's how urgent this is. So, did I know anything about City Hall? Before I was on City Council in 2017, I knew nothing. We are a single event, a single day away from multiple times of having to relocate IT, which shuts down our city, which is inconscionable. I mean, it's the same way that it would be in my own office. If my IT goes down, I'm toast. I can't turn a handpiece, I can't do any of those things. You shut down IT here, and you shut down the city, and you've got billing, you've got all of these other things, you've got city services, you've got all these things. We can't afford multiple events of the city going down. And that's what we're rolling the dice with here, is patching things along and hoping for a better economic deal. I, I'm afraid that the years of us not moving forward have, do, no longer afford us that ability to just kick the can down the road. And essentially, that's what we're asking to do, is kick the can down the road for a little while. And I don't think we can kick the can anymore. I think we've gotta be, I am more than willing to engage the public. I'm more than willing to include what the public sees. I think the public, just like with Parks and Rec, they need to see the ugly picture of what we're sitting in at this point in time, and how we're at a point where we need to move forward. We don't need to sit on our hands, we don't need to pump the brakes, we don't need to put it in a lower gear. We need to get serious about doing something about City Hall. We cannot, I do not want to be responsible for shutting, for the city shutting down once, twice, three times. I don't want to do that. I don't want that to happen on my watch. And if we don't say we're gonna do something about City Hall, and we're gonna roll the dice, then we're taking that, that's not a risk that I'm willing to take. That's, whenever you start talking about the money that gets lost and the money cost of shutting down the city, we were two days away from shutting down City Hall, right? I, I don't want to see that happen. So I think the urgency is really high. Really high.
Ms. Powell?
Well, Mayor, I really don't want to belabor the conversation. Um, I've had the urgency from day one when we first started talking about City Hall. And I've already, I've already voiced my opinion and said it. Um, you know, we're doing all these, these patches, or still what I call Band-Aid fixes, and we're spending, uh, a lot more money to do that, and we're spending taxpayers' dollars to do that. And every day that goes by, City Hall is deteriorating, so it, you know, even if we spend six million dollars now, that's not gonna get us to where we need to be, because we're gonna end up spending a lot more as time goes on. So in my opinion, the quicker we get started, then maybe we can slow the process down of having to repair different pieces of equipment, you know, every week, and I know that's not realistic, but maybe every month or every two months, because it's coming. And we have to take a risk, and, and I know we take a risk in business, but, I mean, I already know what the situation is like, so why do I want to take that risk?
Okay. Um, so I'm in the same, I, I think, I'm in the same boat. It feels like kicking the can down the road. You know, Henry Cloud is a good author who, uh, has a book called A Necessary Ending. And this, this to me feels like a necessary ending, just based on the risk. I remember when Jared called about when the boiler went down, and he called and said, I need to make you aware of something. Jerry has a solution, we're gonna try to implement it. We, none of us knew this great freeze was coming, but I remember having this, uh, tightness in my stomach, thinking, oh, gosh, what if? And I, I don't want that risk anymore. And I, I think taxpayer dollars are better spent with a long-term view of a facility that will serve just our basic needs. And IT and phone systems are basic needs, plumbing that works, and ADA accessibility is important to all of our citizens. So, um, I also am uncomfortable slowing down. So I think what we're hearing is to give the city manager some direction that we do want to move, which means taking action. I want to back up, though, and ask you guys, do you want to do a community solutions? Like, we, I think we maybe could do one next Monday night. It would, it would be an opportunity for the public to come and hear the presentation. And I really appreciate Councilmember Stanley's point of, well, let's make sure we're asking the public to engage in a process that's been defined. I, I mean, we're not taking action today, it's not an action item, but I think you're hearing consensus toward taking action, not waiting, not going back to square one. So it would be more of an education opportunity for citizens, I think, and so that they could ask questions and hear a lot of what we've heard over the last few years. Is that something that we want to ask staff to do?
Uh, yes, I'm definitely on board with doing that, and the sooner the better. I don't want to wait a month to engage the, the community. So if we can do it next week, this week, I'm good.
Council, would we have availability if we set it for Monday night? Better look at mine.
I think so.
Sod Boodles aren't in town, are they?
No.
They are in town.
They are in town. That's the only thing on my calendar, so.
Okay.
Yes, so Monday night would be fine.
Monday's fine with me.
Monday's good with me.
Yes, ma'am.
Stanley, okay. Yes? Okay, so, yeah, or I'm thinking maybe six to seven?
Sounds good.
Okay. And then Jared, talk to us about timeline for, um, putting it then in front of the City Council, because the next step would be choosing an architect?
We are ready to, uh, choose an architect. We've, uh, gone through a selection process, using purchasing to guide that process. On the architect, uh, we can bring that to council at any time, at this point.
Okay. Well, um, Council, I think there's gonna be a called meeting next week to talk about an executive session item. So would you check your calendars for Tuesday at one o'clock? We may want to just put this item on the agenda.
Tuesday, is that correct?
Yes.
Meeting confer.
Yes.
It's the twenty-ninth?
Yes, sir, the twenty-ninth.
Uh, Mayor, what was the time?
Uh, one o'clock on Tuesday.
Uh, thank you.
And so that would be to do an, um, an employee contract negotiation item, an executive session. But we could also add then this item as an action item with an architectural, hiring an architect. That, that's the next step, and that's what's gonna force us to make a decision. So if time is urgent, there is a time opportunity that we could grab next Tuesday, or we could push it, but-
So not, not to ever be somebody to have an opposing idea, um, or to talk too much. We're gonna have a meeting Monday night. We're gonna listen, and we're gonna have a discussion. On Tuesday at one, we're gonna have an executive session with an action item about that same discussion on Monday night, is that correct?
Executive session on an employee contract item?
Not a task item for this particular discussion.
This item would be an action item in public session, not an executive session. So just, I think maybe the words got mixed up a little bit.
I, I don't want to schedule a meeting with this, with the citizens on Monday night and know that we're gonna take action on Tuesday at one. Are, are we saying we would take action at a, at a later date?
Talk about that, why. If, if time, timeline is urgent here, just verbalize your concern there for us.
Because we may hear a, a better idea on Monday night, um, and we may need some time to, to look at it, study it, and decide whether it is better or not. And so how much time are we gonna allot ourselves from Monday night to Tuesday at one to make a good decision Tuesday? And so I'm only thinking in the way of making a good decision that we can stand on. Did we give ourselves enough time?
Okay. Thank you for verbalizing that. So if it was on Tuesday's agenda, and there was a better item or idea, then that could be brought up at that time, is, am I right?
I think the, there's a, there's a lot of options in front of us. And the reason that the architectural contract is coming, uh, right now is because prior guidance from council had been, whether we build City Hall now at Emerald Hardware, or whether we build it at some point in the future, it will stand us in good stead from a timing standpoint and a, uh, ready-to-do-the-project standpoint, to be able to go ahead and do the architectural work now. That's why the architectural contract is in front of you prior to any guidance to go ahead and move forward. Although we do have the, uh, also the, uh, notice of intent to issue certificates of obligation has already been issued, uh, and, and I believe at this point gone through both advertisings. So we do have flexibility, even after the point that if you chose to contract with an architect, to modify both location up to a point, although that will go away relatively soon, within the first month or two, and to certainly modify timing at any point, uh, because we won't initiate construction until, if we were to move as fast as we could early next year. Is that right, Jerry?
Yeah, definitely, first, first of the year, yeah.
Yeah. So, so we do have a number of decision points for council on this process. We can speed up, we, well, we can't really speed up much. We could slow down or even call an audible and go to a different location, as Councilmember Stanley was talking about, uh, new locations. There are some legislature impacts from this previous, from this recent session that would impact the, uh, range of choices that we would have to, to, to touch a green space location to be able to build a new City Hall, but we could still look at that. So there are options in front of council that can incorporate any ideas from Monday night, regardless of what council chooses to do on Tuesday afternoon. So I think there is still options, but we are operating off of prior council guidance. That's why this is ready at this point.
So what you're saying is, is if there is some ideas that we do need to consider, the fact of picking or considering an architect has no bearing on the ability to watch those become part of the plan. But it just keeps us on the scale of beginning to move forward in the direction of City Hall.
I, I think that we would have a lot of flexibility for a couple of months. A significant amount of flexibility for six months. And if, you know, a little bit less flexibility for six months, but still a large amount of flexibility. If you get to the go-no-go decision on construction, obviously, your flexibility changes a lot in the downward, uh, direction. But you've already made a decision at that point. Then the, the questions are furniture, fixtures, and equipment, and, uh, office locations, and, you know, just design minutia.
But what you're saying is things are happening concurrently, which is a time savings to us.
Right, right. We're, we're working a number of paths. Prior council guidance had been, regardless of whether or not we do, uh, the, the, whether or not the Civic Center project passes or fails, we'd need to do something on Civic, City, City Hall, which is why we began the process of identifying the architect. The reason why we initiated that architectural bid process, or that architectural selection process, was with the understanding that we could initiate the project immediately, or we could delay starting of that project, depending on what happened with Civic Center, City Hall, and other things. So we do have flexibility in it, but, but we are moving off of that guy, that prior guidance to go ahead and identify the architect and move, begin the, the design phase. We do maintain a lot of flexibility for a short period of time, like through the end of the year. Potentially, that would go away, you know, once we, once we initiate, uh, construction. Once we, once we start the construction manager at risk selection process, things, your, your flexibility really starts going down at that point.
Okay. Anybody want to give guidance?
I don't mean flexibility on go-no-go.
What time is the meeting Monday, six to seven?
Six to seven.
And then Tuesday would be at one?
Tuesday would be at one. Knowing that, I, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but are you saying that if we moved forward on Tuesday at one, you're uncomfortable having listened to people on Monday night?
No, ma'am. Nope. I think the words that I would use is we're, we're gonna hire an architect on Tuesday, knowing that we don't know what we want to build, or where we want to build it, or how we want to build it, or, or if we want to remodel something. And so that in my line of work is out of order, you know?
But what if?
You identify the need first, and then you get your plan, and then you go hire the architect. So to me, the action item is just, it, it's, it's quicker than it needs to be, because I understand that we want to, we want to keep the process going, but the process is really making the decision of what we want. And getting an architect hired is, is not a difficult thing, and, and really shouldn't take that much time. So I don't feel the urgency to go hire an architect, is all I'm saying.
Okay. I think that's very well verbalized. But I, I think I'm hearing some consensus that others do feel urgency to do that, so. But I really appreciate that you would say that. Just verbalizing what you're thinking is so valuable to us.
Well, thank you. And I, we're, we are in consensus in the way of like, I don't want to tie Jerry's hands and not look forward to the winner. And, and I'm not opposed to, um, you know, taking the appropriate needs that, that we need to, to not be flat-footed on this deal. So we're all looking at this. We have problems down in the basement, and I, I'm in no way saying that we should make light of those or do nothing. Now, kicking the can is a good phrase. Sometimes there's, there's time to kick the can and, and not, you know, kick the bumper on the car and break your toe, and so like, you know, I don't know that we have the best decision in front of us right now, and I'm, I'm just trying to lay that out, so. But man, Jerry, thank you. I, I know that was a long ordeal, and so I appreciate you going through that with me.
Yeah. Okay. Any other question? Yes?
When did we purchase the Emerald Hardware building? Which month?
November.
November?
Twenty-twenty.
And, and maybe it would be good for that community solutions meeting to have a timeline of the steps we've taken over the last three years on this. Just to have a summary of the process that we've gone through. It, I know it feels fast to Councilmember Stanley, and I think it, it doesn't feel fast to the four of us, and that's just, you know, situational arrival. Uh, we arrived at it and have been working on it for at least three years, so, I, I told Cole last week, I said, uh, at workshop, it's sort of like skiing with my teenage boys. You know, I'm, I'm always last up the hill, so when I get to where they've been resting, they're gone again. And I'm like, gosh, okay. So that's, Cole, Cole's the old lady skier who, uh, has jumped on with a bunch of teenagers.
We all know I'm having a hard time keeping up with Howard, and so like, I don't want you to feel like I'm offended. I, I understand.
We all struggle to keep up with Howard.
It's a natural difference in athletic ability.
It is.
Oh, let's go.
I love it. Yes. That's it. That's it. Okay. Mr. City Manager, do you have what you need from us on this item?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. We will do notices for the meetings that we've talked about. We'll be ready to, uh, bring a timeline and, and supporting information for the conversation, both on Monday and on Tuesday.
Okay. Um, Council, do we need a bathroom break?
Uh, yes, ma'am, absolutely.
Yes, okay. Let's take a bathroom break, and we'll come back to item one F.
And an afternoon nap and a snack.
Check their phones for messages. I think we're ready to go back to the- Check their phones for messages. I think we're ready to go back to the agenda, and we ended on item 1F. So, yes, sir.
Mayor, could I make a comment on the last item we talked about?
Yes.
Oh, Cole, maybe this will help a little. I know you, from your viewpoint, we're moving along pretty fast. But we made a, this, the previous council made a contract to purchase the hardware building sometime maybe two months approximately prior to the Civic Center election. We made it because we needed a Civic Center. We had a feasibility time for a period of time that was after, that finished after the election. But basically, the council decided they wanted that, that to be the, the, uh, Su, City Hall. And so, that's kind of why I felt like we needed to charge ahead. We had already made the decision. I don't know if that makes sense, Mayor.
So, is what you're saying is that we could have gotten out of that contract after the election?
We could have.
But we didn't. And we did have thorough conversation about it then?
We had a lot of discussion about it.
Yeah. I think that's a good point. I'm glad you're bringing that up.
And, and before we even decided that, we considered several, I'm going to say, four, five, or six buildings, and, uh, couldn't make a deal.
But tried.
So, I don't, we did try.
Yeah.
I know we made an offer on one. We thought the asking price was pretty good, and they countered with a million more than the asking price. I didn't like that.
Okay.
I don't know if it helped.
Thank you, Howard. That does.
Okay. Thanks, Howard. Uh, item 1F, San Jacinto Arts Project on Route 66 update. Y'all been very patient. Thank you so much. Now, let me just say, look how informed you are about our City Hall project.
We are. We are. And I was thinking, since you guys are thinking you're going to move out of here, I think those curtains would make lovely playclothes for the Von Trapp family.
I was going to say.
So. Um, and yes, so with all of the heavy things you guys have been discussing, we get to discuss something that's happy and light and wonderful. I'm Melin Huntley. We have been doing arts projects in the neighborhoods in Amarillo now for several years. Our first project was the North Heights Project. Fabulous, fabulous. And, and what we learned from the North Heights Arts Project, we, we combined the history of a neighborhood with art, and what we heard from people was it, it, for the first time, that history touched their hearts. And we learned in, through North Heights of a neighborhood that thrived in spite of inordinate challenges, challenges from Jim Crow laws, issues that were just, um, difficult. And yet, they created this incredible, beautiful life. Then, the next year, we did the Barrio. And Barrio was often overlooked as, and the people of the Barrio built the city. They were responsible for the railroad. Um, they were responsible for a whole lot of the infrastructure of Amarillo. But what we saw there was this incredible bond of family. And so, now we're to our third project. Our third project is the San Jacinto Arts Project on Route 66. And, um, what we have found in researching this, we're going to start from an 1895 courthouse, that, um, it was the first permanent stone structure in Potter County. There are no photographs of it. It's one of the sites that we have selected. We go all the way from that to the heyday of, of Route 66 and the advent of travel. So, what happens with our arts projects? We, as some of you may or may not know, is we identify 15 to 20 historically significant sites in, in an area, in a neighborhood. And then, we invite artists to tell those stories through their craft, whether it's photography, or painting, or poetry, whatever it is that is their form. We invite them to go to create these sites and capture that history. Then, we have a show. Those things are for sale. Half the proceeds go into the neighborhood to help support these neighborhood projects. So, I'm very excited that we are going to be having the next show on September the 30th. That will be the premiere. And, uh, we'll be down on Sixth Street. Some of the sites that are, are featured, one, everyone's familiar with the Nat. It was the Natatorium. It had a swimming pool in there to begin with, built in 1922, later became a dance hall. You may not know about the One Stop Does It, which is spelled W-U-N-S-T-O-P. That's one word. Does It, D-U-Z-Z-I-T. That was Cal Farley's, and it was a service station, tire store, and he had a radio station in the back. And so, every day, he would do a radio broadcast from the One Stop Does It, and he would call out merchants in, in the area, and he basically promoted them. That's one of those places that was down on Sixth Street. Also had Texas's very first licensed beauty school. Uh, the, the Beef Burger Barrel is very iconic in Amarillo, and it's a real good example of kind of the architecture that happened along Route 66 where people were looking for some kind of, um, iconic, memorable architecture. And so, that place was in a barrel. That's its third location. It's been in two other locations in Amarillo before now. And then, there's the Golden Light Cafe, which is the longest continually operating restaurant on all of Route 66. And it's right here. So, th- those are just some of the neat places that I hope will inspire artists to get, to pick up their pencils, their paints, whatever it is that they do. So, um, in addition to having the art show on September the, um, 30th, we're going to, we're planning a pléneur event. And in pléneur, for painters to come out to Sixth Street and paint. People can stop by and watch them doing that, that, watch them as they're painting. Uh, that same night, they want to have a Bob Ross look-alike contest. And I've looked around out here, and I think some of you guys would look really good in a nice Afro wig and chambray shirt and some plaid bell bottoms. I think you could totally rock it. So, um, you know, that's going to be something to look forward to as well. So, we're here to talk about it. You know, we, we have through these projects, we've helped fund some of these neighborhood projects that don't have two nickels to rub together. The city has been very helpful with some of our expenses. We're hoping that you will do that again for us with some of the, the things that we need to rent in order to pull off this event. But more than anything else, we just wanted to share with you that this was coming and, um, and let you know that we want to see you there. And, and Mayor Nelson, I wholly expect you to get your paints out and find a place that, that just, you know, everybody's going to, yes, that, that, uh, and, and submit something for this.
Well, I will hope to do that. We've got a lot of work on our plate.
I know. I know.
I don't know if the painting, Ginger Nelson, will be much around, but we'll see.
Okay. And so Catherine is here. Catherine is the president of the San Jacinto Neighborhood, and, um, all the information about the arts project is, is on their website, and it's also on the city's website. So, you can find all sorts of information, but more than anything else, we just wanted to let everybody know that we're kicking it off, and it's happening again.
Thank you, Melin. Um, our website is S J N, stands for San Jacinto Neighborhood, sjnamarillo.org. And again, um, you know, we do have bond funds that we can do for a lot of the projects, but then we've identified a lot of projects that are not covered by the bond. So, this fundraiser for us will be a, a way to, to get some of our other projects done in the neighborhood. So, we thank you for your support.
Good. That's great, ladies. Thank you. Are there any questions from the council?
Yeah. I just want, excuse me, I just wanted to say thank you to Melin for you and your committee for kind of starting this. And, I mean, it's just been great telling the stories throughout the different neighborhoods. And I believe you, you mentioned Golden Light Cafe, the original one. You know, they've been around, I think they're coming up on their 75th anniversary, like in about September or something. So, they've been around a long time.
They have. And if you read their story, there's a missing chili recipe.
Yes.
That was not handed down from one person to the next. And so, if anybody can find that chili recipe, we'd all like to have it.
And they have a second location over off of Western, so. And it's, if you haven't been there, it's pretty neat.
Yes. That's, those are such great stories. That's going to be a great event. Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you, guys. Okay. Item 1G is discuss SPS application to increase fuel factor. Mr. City Manager?
All right, Mayor. I am going to... All right, just to give a little background on this item, this is something that we've seen, uh, a number of times, not so much fuel factor, but discussing rate type cases from both gas and electric. This is with SPS. Cities do not have original jurisdiction over the fuel factors and fuel costs. Uh, the PUC has exclusive jurisdiction over it. City's ability to influence the outcome, however, is by, uh, applying to intervene. So, that allows us to provide additional information and find additional, discover additional information that can in, better inform us, our ratepayers, and the PUC as they make the decisions on what to do. So, fuel factor is, uh, I've got a real long description of what it is, but basically, the fuel factor is the variable that's included in the billing calculation based on usage that recovers revenue to pay for the cost of fuel for the electric utility. We are a member of the ACXOM, which is the Alliance of XL Municipalities. So, when I say SPS and XL, it's an interchangeable term for the most part. When you ask SPS, they're going to say, no, they're not interchangeable because it's different regions. Uh, but we are the Alliance of XL Municipalities. There's over 80 cities that participate in the ACXOM Alliance. We have a, uh, a, a steering committee that is made up of a number of cities on which we sit. Uh, the steering committee, uh, just reviewed, uh, the proposal. We have, uh, legal assistants, specialists who deal in rate cases, who has provided guidance to us and recommended that we, uh, seek to intervene. Uh, so, we have moved that way based on steering committee input. Uh, all cities in the ACXOM Alliance are doing it. And what it does is it's going to slow down the process a little bit and provide adequate time to be able to evaluate the underpinnings, the financial assumptions that go into the fuel factor change, because it will result in an increase in cost to our ratepayers. Uh, the increase in cost, SPS proposes a surcharge that, that's going to forecast a $76 million under recovery over the last 24 months, uh, which would increase, or over the next 24 months. It's a under recovery that's associated with the recent storm, the, the winter storm. So, there were costs associated with that. It will result in, uh, increase the, it'll increase the current Texas retail fuel charge by about 18%. It'll increase, uh, that increase in fuel costs will increase, will result in an increase of about 3.4% or about $4 a month in total monthly bills for residential customers. So, we want to make sure that we have a full understanding of all the information, all the numbers that go into this, uh, request. We also want to be able to balance who pays for this increase, because there's a lot of different classes of ratepayers that fall into the, uh, this pay mix. So, there's your residential ratepayers, your large municipal class, which is what we fall into. There's also the industrial class, and all of those are going to want to make sure that they're not paying more than their fair share. Uh, so we want to make sure that we can, uh, have a role to, to balance that and make sure that our ratepayers are not paying more than they should, that our industrial ratepayers are not paying more than they should, and make sure that, that allocation of the rates and the change of those fuel factors for all the different pay classes are done appropriately. Uh, so, that's what's going on. It's happening right now. Uh, even if we wanted to not intervene, the balance of the ACXOM communities have chosen to do that. So, I just wanted to give you an update on that and allow you a chance to ask me any questions. Uh, SPS is a great partner. None of this is meant to, uh, imply that this is inappropriate. It just makes sure that everybody has a very clear understanding of all of the numbers that go into this request. It is an extremely, uh, challenging, uh, proposal to really understand. That's why we have, uh, 80-plus cities that all pitch in to legal representation to be able to review the numbers on behalf of those cities, and on, in, in the interest of making sure that our ratepayers know that we've done everything responsibly that we can to make sure that their rates are correct. The purpose of this is not to drive down, uh, the rates that are, that our ratepayers pay. It's just to make sure that it's accurate and that they're paying what they should be paying and not more. Is there any questions that I or Laura or anybody else can answer? Laura is a part of, uh, Laura reviews this, is, spends a lot of time working on this with our, uh, hired attorneys, uh, as well as working with me on it. So, if there's any questions, we can answer for you. We'd love to answer them now. All right.
Nothing? Okay.
Thank you, Jared. Um, item 1G is just a follow-up, council, to our workshop last week where we talked some about strategic planning, and we touched a little bit on governance policy. Um, I will be scheduling over the next couple of months on our agendas, pieces of our existing governance policy for us to dialogue about, um, working toward having a, a vote to reapprove those policies 1st of September. But I think it's really important that we, as a team, take time to digest them, give our new team member time to ask questions. Um, so, I just wanted you to know that's the plan with regard to our policy. And today, I would like to just open for discussion, policy number one, which are our governance policies. Um, hopefully, you guys have had a chance to read those seven policies. Um, it's six and a half pages. And is there anybody who has a question or, um, you know, we could go line by line through it. I'm open to that. And maybe, Cole, we should, how would you like for us to go through it?
Um, no, I don't, I don't believe going line by line would be necessary. I think that, I felt like I had a good education, you know, last week in governance and ends. And then, you know, we had a good discussion, and so, uh, to understand you correctly, you're going to take policy one right now just as a standalone, and then you'll follow up as we continue to walk through this.
Right. Next meeting, next regularly scheduled meeting, we'll go policy two. It's just breaking it into bite-sized pieces in case we want to pause and discuss anything, tweak anything, revise anything.
Policy seven.
Yeah. Policy one has seven parts to it. Yeah.
Yeah. And I, I think, you know, for me, I would like to hear what the council has to say on, you know, what they felt has been effective, and if they want to tweak it, or if you want to do anything different to it, and just go from there.
Okay. Great. Then I'll open it up to incumbent council members, um, places three, four, and two. Just anybody have a comment on policies one through seven? Again, these are our, policy one covers our governance process, um, how, what the council's role is, um, who owns the city council, and that's clearly our citizens, um, our council code, code of conduct, um, our council's style and vision, how we do council action, and our citizen advisory boards and commissions. And then, just the last policy is real short, and it just says basically, we will regularly look at these policies and give them any revisions or update that they need. Um, so, anybody else have anything they want to bring up for discussion or change?
Policy one was pretty straightforward. I felt like, I felt like this, of any of the things that, that I felt like that I wouldn't have a lot to say about, this one will be the one that I don't. I mean, I, it just basically is your basic game plan for how we're going to handle things, and I don't think that a lot has changed. So, I'm pretty happy with that.
Um, you know, when we look at policy one, it, in, in governance policy, you have to always ask who's, who's the owner, because that's who the people that are governing the business answer to for their decisions. And it, it is very important that we always keep in mind who the owners are, and the owners are citizens. So, um, we represent them, their ideas, their values, and we report to them. Um, I think it's good. I like this community solutions idea that the communications team has come up with. It does allow us, um, the opportunity outside of business meetings. So, it's two opportunities to report to citizens. I, I like that, but... Anything else there that needs to be discussed or that stuck out to you as you read through it? And if you're a citizen and you're curious about this, um, you can reach out to our communications department, and here's the email address. It's public... department, and here's the email address. It's publiccommunications, with an S, at Amarillo.gov. And they can answer really any question for you, but that's a great place to put in a request to get a copy of this policy. Or you can call the mayor's hotline at 378-6445, and we'll be happy to get you a copy of it that way. Okay, no further discussion on that. Also included in this agenda item is just the city council code of conduct. And that is basically four and a half pages at the back of this book. Did anybody have any, it lays out city council responsibilities, the mayor's responsibilities, our mayor pro tem responsibilities, council member responsibilities, city manager responsibilities. It's just another way of looking at who's, who's in what lane, and who's gonna be responsible for the balls that come into that lane. And then the code of conduct just talks about how we will work together as a team, and how we interact with citizens and staff. So it's pretty straightforward, but certainly open to having any conversation, answering any questions, or entertaining any suggestions to revise it. Anybody? Councilman Stanley, anything there? Just, is your onboarding with us?
No, I don't think so.
Okay.
Thank you.
It's pretty straightforward, and I think that's the benefit of having a policy manual, is it's, it's for the new folks and the old folks, but should be a help to you, not a, not a burden. Okay.
Mayor, did you mention code of ethics?
Did I? Did I? If I didn't, that should be included. Thank you. Yes, the code of ethics on page twenty-two and twenty-three. Thank you, Frida. Okay, then the last thing, just to kind of follow up from our workshop last week, is talking about how we define success for this next term. We have twenty-three months to work together as a team to answer to our owners and to improve the city. So this is something that we looked at last week in workshop. I made, I told you all it was a jumping off point. I made a few changes to it based on things I heard, suggestions and comments made in the workshop, that our success for the next two years is, I think it's best defined when we're intentional, and we say what target we're aiming toward. If we fall short of it, sometimes that happens, but it's more, more likely to actually accomplish the target if we've, if we've defined what success would look like. So I think as far as our individual council members, success looks like being prepared every time we come to work together as a team. That's being present, mind and body, and participating in the meetings, and that we know each other's strengths and weaknesses so we can function together as a healthy team, that we know and apply our governance policies and our code of ethics and conduct policies. That's why we're gonna spend some time over the next couple of months addressing that. And then we know and apply our strategic plan pillars, and everybody has a copy of those that we got from workshop last week. And again, if you're a citizen and want a copy of our strategic plan, you can reach out to the public communications department or call the mayor's office. So we'll be prepared. I think success looks like having the information we need in order to make decisions. And that is, I think, a very important thing for each one of us, because sometimes the votes are hard. There's, there's not a clear right or a clear wrong. So anytime you need to ask for additional information, I think we define success by saying you, as a council member, need to do that, and we need, I need to, as the mayor, create space for you to do that. When possible, staff is gonna provide that information in a timeframe that allows each member to study and review the information before the next council meeting. So I just, from an expectations point of view, I think information is really important, and when you ask for it, that it be responded to by staff in a reasonable timeframe. And then that we, we would follow through, when we ask staff to go get something, that we would follow through and actually review what they go and get for us. It's just another part of how we succeed, I think. Item number three, communication. And boy, y'all had such good dialogue on this during the workshop. These, a lot of these points came out of things that I heard y'all say last week. We will succeed when our communication between council members happens in accordance with the Open Meetings Act. That's obviously very important. And we will succeed when council members have the opportunity to listen and discuss every issue before the council takes action on the issue. We'll succeed when council members verbalize their thoughts, especially their concerns, so that the entire team has the benefit of the thoughts and has an opportunity to ask questions or discuss those thoughts. Unverbalized concerns lead to frustrations, and it can lead to a break in unity here at the council, and that interferes with our ability to, to help accomplish the council's mission. So I, I don't expect we're gonna have any problems there, but I think it's important for us to define that as how we succeed together. Council members will follow the code of ethics in all communications, and we won't make personal attacks, and we won't label each other, and we won't make accusations about motivation. And this was something that I added based on dialogue we had last week, that I think if we'll say right up front, we're not gonna do that, and we're gonna make an intentional effort to have dialogue about ideas and not making accusations, that will be part of how we succeed. Outside a council member, I'm sorry, outside a council meeting, council members will carefully communicate facts to citizens, and all communication will build unity of the council, even if it reflects differences of opinions on issues. Once council has taken final action on an issue, communication about the issue should reflect the council's action and not individual perspectives. And we had really good dialogue on that last week about why that's important. It's important for all of those perspectives to be at the table, but once an issue has been decided, going backwards only creates division. So are we part of the process? Yes. We're engaged, we're sharing our thoughts, we're verbalizing our concerns. And then when it's voted on as a team, we have to move forward respecting that the process arrived at a decision, and now we're moving to the next thing. So I think there's a typo there. It says council members will define the process, and I think I should have put defend the process, even if a member didn't agree with the decision. So the last point under communication is that communication about city issues should ideally happen during business hours, which respects staff and council members' family time. So Jared would probably bust me on that, because I call him about all kinds of different things at all kinds of different times of day. But I think a healthy team targets for those communications to happen during business hours. And then the last couple are short, that success looks like action being taken by the council, and that council will take action on items that accomplish the city mission and move the city's strategic plan forward. Council will follow a clearly defined process on all our actions. We will define a problem. We will research questions. We will listen to proposed solutions. We will discuss proposed solutions, and we will vote on a solution. And that's something that was an add from what we talked about last week, because that's the process we've followed over the last four years, but I don't think I've ever put it on paper as a defined process. And I think defining success means defining our process and being able to defend the process after we've taken action. So went ahead and made that change. After taking action, council will practice resiliency. This, this change came from Ron, mainly. When action has taken on an issue, action's been taken on an issue, we'll move past it, and we will both win and lose with grace, no matter what our individual opinion was about an issue. And then the last one is, we define a successful term, also has an emphasis on relationships, that council will build relationships with each other and staff that promote professionalism, respect, and healthy communication, and that we can disagree strongly on issues and still protect the relationships on the council. So, somewhat aspirational, but are there anything, anything from council that you wanna add, change, go a different direction on? Nothing? Okay, well, I will tuck that away as something that we'll come back to. We're gonna do an action item, I think, in September that includes everything. But if, if you have thoughts, we can always revisit it. All I need is just to hear from you that needs to go back on a discussion agenda. Okay. Item 1I is to request future agenda items and reports from the city manager. Anybody have anything?
Just update on the mowing for Tex dot, and then also within the city of Amarillo.
We will send you a summary this week. We will also schedule that for conversation. And, well, at least I'll have, based on what we send out, I'll have a conversation with the mayor about what we wanna do on the next council meeting. But I would think we would have a discussion item, just to recap that for you at the first meeting in July.
Thank you.
Does that work, Mayor?
Uh huh, it does. Anything else? Okay. Item number two is a consent agenda. And, Mr. City Manager, I think we have one item we need to pull. Remind me the letter.
Yes, ma'am. We've had a request to pull item O.
Item O, okay. We're gonna pull item O, council. And that is because council member Stanley needs to step out while we discuss and vote on that item. Just, yes, we're just going through a process there that protects against any possible conflict. So removing item O. Anything else that needs to be removed, council? Okay, do we have a motion with regard to the consent agenda?
Yes, Mayor. I move to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item O.
Second.
It's been moved by council member Powell and seconded by council member Sauer. All of those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Anyone opposed? Okay, that item passes with a five oh vote. And council member Stanley? Yeah, if we can just excuse you for a moment. Okay, item O is the consideration of a sale of city-owned property, the former fire station number nine. Mr. City Manager?
Right, Mayor. We've, sorry, one second. I was at the wrong page.
Yeah, sorry. I mean, it is, it was on the consent agenda, so it is, it's simply stated, for sale at four hundred and one thousand dollars, and this item would authorize you to execute a contract and other necessary documents for the sale of fire station number nine, which is located at three, four, four, five, Western.
Just to give some additional context, we listed this property at three hundred and fifty thousand. We had a number of potential buyers bidding on the property. We have staff that can answer any questions, but it is a very good deal for the city. It will help pay for needed fire assets and development of fire facility, specifically the fire maintenance facility, the equipment and apparatus maintenance facility that we have, that we recently purchased and are renovating right now. But listed for three hundred and fifty thousand, sale price is four hundred and one thousand. This item would authorize the city manager to execute the contract and move forward with the sale. This is located at Southwestern at Thirty-Fourth and Janet.
Council, do you have any questions? Do we have a motion on this item?
Yes, Mayor, we do. I move to approve, excuse me, I move to authorize the city manager to execute a contract and other necessary documents for the sale of city property, which is the former fire station number nine located at three, four, four, five, Southwestern Street, in the amount of four hundred and one thousand dollars minus closing cost.
It's been moved by council member Powell and seconded by council member Smith to approve the sale and authorize the city manager to execute a contract with regard to this property. Any further discussion or questions about the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? So that passes with a four oh vote, with one council member, council member Stanley abstaining due to a possible conflict. Jenny, would you be willing to? Thank you. That item was approved, Cole.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, now moving on to item 3A, which is to consider a resolution authorizing the refunding of Canadian River Municipal Water Authority subordinate lien contract revenue refunding bonds, series 2012.
Right, so this item is refunding debt that was issued in 2012. It would take advantage of significantly lower interest rates to save a significant amount of money on the net present value of the project. This is, this project was for a wellfield, wellfield project, back in 2012. Refunding this project now, depending on what interest rate is realized in October, September, whenever we finish this refunding project, should save, is projected to save somewhere between six hundred and eight thousand and eight hundred and fifty-two thousand. So there's a significant savings to be had by refunding this project at this time to take advantage of low interest rates. We have Laura Storrs, Chief Financial Officer, to answer any questions about the refunding, or if you go into the specifics of the project itself, we also have Floyd Hartman, Assistant City Manager, to, to answer any questions you've got.
Do we have questions, council? Okay, I don't think we do. Do we have a motion, then?
Yes, Mayor, we do. I move to approve the resolution authorizing the Canadian River Municipal Water Authority to issue refunding bonds to refund all or part of the outstanding Canadian River Municipal Water Authority subordinate lien contract revenue refunding bonds, bonds, series 2012. Well, that was kind of a mouthful.
That's a mouthful.
Yeah, it was.
That's a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
It's been moved by council member Powell and seconded by council member Sauer to approve this resolution. Is there discussion or questions about that motion? Nope? Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Okay, that passes with a five oh vote. Yes, sir?
Before we jump, I just, I just wanted to recognize, you know, these refundings, we, we get used to seeing them on a regular basis. But the ability to save all this money, and council member Stanley was kind of commenting about this earlier, is, is, is due to the hard work of our finance team, led by Laura Storrs, Debbie Reed, and all the rest of the people that are looking out for our dollars, taking advantage of these refundings whenever they present themselves. They do have limitations on how frequently or how soon you can do them. So, you know, they're always on top of every single bond, and as soon as we can refund them to save a significant amount of monies, money for taxpayers, we do it. But that's led by the finance team. I definitely wanted to recognize the work that Laura's been doing on this, on these types of projects.
That's an excellent pause. Laura, please thank everyone in the finance department for us, Matt, Debbie, all of them do a great job, and, and it does save the city a lot of money. So we really appreciate you. Yeah. Okay, item 3B is considering entering into a pre-development services agreement with Garfield Public Private LLC. Mr. City Manager?
Right, Mayor, thank you. We've got Andrew Freeman, Managing Director of Planning and Special Projects, to present the item. We also have representative here from Garfield, Steve Galbrecht. So Andrew's gonna present, and Andrew and Steve will be available to answer any questions council might have on this item.
Yes, sir. So I just wanted to start off first, just covering the background again on how this process started and how we've gotten to today. The committee was formed after the bond election failed in November, to really discuss and research alternative options on how to fund the project that didn't rely strictly on general obligation bonds to pay for it. Specifically, it was discussed during the November seventeenth council meeting, where the vision was really laid out. The mayor discussed the plan for it, and that's when she talked about Jason Herrick leading that committee. So following that, between November 2020 and January 2021, that's when Jason and myself did a lot of research, had a lot of discussions on what are other cities doing, what, what can we specifically do in Texas, how might we be funding this that we haven't thought about before. That generated a lot of ideas, and also led us to visit with five potential P3 partners specifically. We had Zoom meetings with each of them, had other staff involved as well to listen to them and learn a little bit more. And then based on that discussion, with this being professional services, it doesn't typically follow an RFQ, RFP process. There's more, more discussion, negotiation, and really relationship building with this type of partner. So that's when we developed a written concept that we sent out in February 2021. We sent it out to the five partners that we discussed this project with and received four responses. And then after that, we had meetings with each potential partner to discuss those concepts. We had multiple staff involved, including the city manager, deputy city manager, city attorney. We also had private citizens, community members involved in that process to get additional feedback. That included Jennifer Gallardo, that actually participated with the previous civic center committee, Wes Wright, Mason Rogers, Wes Purser, Ronnie Walker, Clay Stripling, and Brad Wes Wright, Mason Rogers, Wes Purser, Ronnie Walker, Clay Stribling, and Brad Baldridge. So we had financial experts, legal, nonprofits, really tried to get cross-the-board perspective through this process to get their feedback on trying to select a potential partner. So that was very beneficial in this process. And then, of course, city council last week was introduced to the Garfield Public Private LLC in much more detail. They went through a very lengthy presentation, answered a lot of questions about their, their company and some of the projects they've worked on in Texas and across the country. So that leads us to today. On your council agenda is a pre-development services agreement with Garfield Public Private LLC. And just a little bit of background on what the services include. It would evaluate the existing conceptual design, update construction cost estimates, analyze Civic Center operations, complete any third-party review of environmental, geotechnical, and market studies. We've also added in the public and stakeholder engagement that's been requested by council through this process to get that public discussion of this process. And then ultimately, preparation of a final report and a finance plan of how this project could potentially move forward for council to consider at the end of this phase. The pre-development costs are not to exceed $494,200 and would be paid by hotel occupancy taxes. And then another note during this phase that you saw in the contract that was in your agenda packet is that we would discuss another professional service agreement that really lays out the execution of whatever might come out of this pre-development phase. So this is really the brainstorming, reviewing everything, figuring out how we might be able to fund it differently. And then we'd execute additional document if we moved into the formal design phase, next step of the process, to actually fund it and move forward with Garfield having, being included in that process as a master developer, helping oversee the contracts, the selections, and the overall development project as a whole. So I'm happy to answer any questions you might have on the agreement. Steve is also here. He has a flight to catch a little after six, but he's here for all the tough questions that you might have from, from Garfield.
So Andrew, I do have several questions. I had a citizen that actually reached out to me. And I want to be perfectly transparent because this whole process has been transparent from the beginning. And I know that Garfield has worked with Irving and Beaumont and then the city of Lubbock. Were there any major issues in working with those individuals? Those individual city leaders, I might say, in those projects?
Sure, and we did follow up on that. Irving was a successful project. That hotel is now operational. Steve can go in more details about how successful that project was. But we haven't heard any negative feedback on that one. They actually have not done a project in Beaumont. I believe Steve told me it's been about 20 years since they maybe sat in on a meeting for a potential project, but did not move forward on one, passed the first kind of introductory meeting. And then Buddy Holly, we've heard really rave reviews on how that project went. They've also done the Overton in Lubbock and are now on to the Expo project. So they've done three projects with three different partners in the Lubbock area, which I think is a sign of how positive it's been for them there.
And I think to provide a little more information on Irving, the city manager and the mayor both gave really good reviews of Garfield's performance in Irving. Like any project, they had some challenges on the financing side, but they worked through that as they were, as they were going through the gestation phase of the project. So challenges are not, that's what people overcome. But as far as the mayor and the city manager, which is not everybody in Irving, but there are two people that have had a lot of exposure and input on the project. They had very good reviews of Garfield on that project.
Okay, and then my other question?
I'll just add one little tidbit to that. Doing some due diligence back in May, I did reach out to the Lubbock mayor because they've done three projects, or they're, they've done two and starting a third in Lubbock. And I wanted to know, do they do what they say they're going to do? What's your experience with them been like? Has it been good? Has it been frustrating? Do you, has it been fair? Has it moved on the timelines you thought it would move on? All of that. So had a great conversation with the mayor, and he gave good remarks. And he said, you know, you really need to talk to Rob Allison, who was the head of the committee for the Buddy Holly Performing Arts Center, which was their second project in Lubbock. And ironically, Rob was a city employee at the time that they did the first project in Lubbock, their convention hotel, the Overton. So he did the first project with them, kind of in the Andrew role. And then he retired, and he did the second project with them as a governing board member, the president of this Buddy Holly Performing Arts Center board. And then he is going to also be involved in the next project, which is the County Expo Center. So I had a great conversation with Rob Allison. He was on vacation, but he called me just so that I could grill him with a ton of questions about whether or not this was a firm that we wanted to go into a contract with and do business with. And I was very pleased with what Rob had to say. And obviously, that's 15 years of experience that Rob has had working personally with Garfield on three different projects, start to finish on two of them. So, and actually, two of them is city projects, one of them is a county project. And really, the second project is more of a private. So he's kind of touched all the bases in Lubbock and worked in-depth with this Garfield team. And just to sum it up, what his summary was, they do what they say they're going to do. And that felt very West Texas to me, but I'll just pass on that feedback. I think I had that conversation with Rob on May 22nd.
I did forget to mention, we emailed out the list of requested projects and kind of the financing structure. Six of the 16 on this list that they shared were in Texas. And that was really a high point of the discussion with the committee is their familiarity with Texas, the financial rules in Texas, and just the relationship that they have in the state.
And during your presentation just now, you mentioned the committee members, other than yourself and Jason Herrick. Could you, could you go back through those members again for me?
Sure. And they're kind of unofficial committee members, but they participate in the interview process. Jennifer Gallardo, Wes Wright, Mason Rogers, Wes Purser, Ronnie Walker, Clay Stribling, and Brad Baldridge.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Then we had myself, Jared, Kevin, and Brian. And then the mayor also sat in on some of those.
From the city side?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Mayor, that's all I have.
And for anybody watching's benefit, when he says, Andrew, we've talked about his position, I'm the city manager. We have the deputy city manager, we have the city attorney. You said one more.
Oh, that was, oh, and the mayor.
Yeah.
Of course, the mayor was the mayor.
That's what, of course, the mayor's mayor.
Yes.
I just wanted, the purpose of that was just to point out that it was pretty diverse, but also a pretty senior group of people that were participating on the city side.
Yes.
And then taking input and working with the citizens that were on the interview committee, along with the committee that was assigned by the mayor and council.
So not the traditional RFQ, RFP scoring process, but definitely an intense process to vet these companies and interview them.
Steve, I'm watching the time. I'm not sweating it for you yet because I know how great our airport is, but you might be sweating it. Anything you want to say? Let's go ahead and bring you to the podium in case council has any questions for you.
Sure.
Yeah, no, I think.
If y'all missed that, you're watching at home, he's trying to catch a flight.
Look, it's fine. Don't rush for me. I'm here to answer questions.
Okay, questions, council? I think Frida, you were done with your questions. Councilmember Stanley, do you have any?
Yes, I do. So a couple just contractual things. So on page three of nine, I guess I'm on six there, says note that any third-party legal, financial advisory or bond underwriting modeling fees or cost, if any, are not included in this proposal. Can you define that? I'm not quite understanding what you mean.
That would be any of the city's costs for their bond counsel or their financial advisor. We want them, we want them at the table.
Okay, great.
But they're contracted directly to you.
Okay. On the insurance, this could potentially be a really large project dollar-wise. A $1 million per occurrence GL seems a little light. Do y'all carry a 5 million umbrella or what other insurance do you have?
So, the design build firm is going to be the one who's carrying the most insurance, and they'll carry above 5 million for sure.
Yes, can you explain that a little bit better? Because I want to make sure I understand, in an errors and omissions instance where there's a design issue.
The architects carry more than that as well. So, yeah, we're in an advisory role and kind of the quarterback of the team. The architects who are actually doing the design, stamping, drawings, engineers, they're going to carry that higher insurance as well as the contractor.
And Steve, is that, is that part of this phase? Or would there be another contract before we hit that?
That is going to be on the next phase, the professional services agreement that Andrew spoke about. This phase is really the investigation phase. We're, I think we're carrying a $1 million per occurrence insurance policy for this, which this is really an advisory consulting role, right, at this point? So.
Does that help, Cole?
That makes sense, yes, sir. And so some of my questions, I think, are just coming from your, your schedule of values that are broken down.
Okay.
Let me ask you one other quick question here.
Sure.
And I just want to make sure I understand it. Page six of nine, letter O, reinstatement. In the event the city were to decide at any time during the pre-development period not to proceed with the project, and in the event the city were to decide in its sole discretion to move forward with the project at a later date on or before the second anniversary of the date of termination or expiration of this agreement, covenant, and agree to proceed in good faith to finalize and execute the PSA on terms. So I'm struggling a little bit there in understanding. We choose not to move forward in this scenario with your firm, but then we do choose to move forward with a different project. Where's the definition of similarity there? What are, how would it be tied?
So what this is saying is it's contemplating that the city moves forward. We finished this, this, this study, and we get to the point the city says, we're pumping the brakes, we're not going to do this. We're just asking that if the city does reinstate the project within 24 months, that they come back and bring us to the table to be a team member.
And that would be covered under your proprietary knowledge and basically your, your design and everything else that you brought to the table? Not necessarily tying our hands in any way of doing a different project?
Yeah, if we, if we were terminated for some reason, I don't believe this, this, I'm not an attorney, and my attorney's probably watching now saying, ah, what is he doing?
Stop practicing law!
Stop practice. But, but, you know, if we were terminated, obviously, that, this doesn't seem like it would be, be in effect.
This is great because I'm not an attorney either, and we're both going to talk about it like we know what we're saying. So here's an attorney verbiage, like, is there, is there a way to clean that up or strike that in some form or fashion? Or at least greater defined?
Well, I think the city has the ability to, to terminate the agreement. We're just asking if everybody's happy with the report, you, you just put it on a shelf, and then it comes back a year later, we'd just like you to call us rather than just going and calling, you know, somebody else.
Mr. City Attorney, would you weigh in on that for us?
Yes, I can. Obviously, we can negotiate, we can take things out, I can work with your council on anything. And we certainly could clean that up if you want to, Cole. But I think the way he's described it is, is accurate. That would be my understanding of it. It's just a window to bring them back if we decide to do the project.
Does that language as it exists make you nervous?
It does not.
Okay.
And it doesn't limit the ability to terminate the agreement if you guys say, we're not doing this project, you know?
That's what it's for.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and I'm, I understand what you're saying there, and I'm just asking the question of, we terminate the agreement, but we have terminated the, the idea to move forward in a different way. So bottom line, able to terminate the agreement with your firm and still move forward with the project as long as it doesn't have your proprietary ownership on it, correct?
That, that seems reasonable.
Okay. Quickly, to go to your schedule of values, I've got a few other questions here. If I can get there. I skipped it. Okay. Currently, are you involved in any lawsuits or anything against your firm?
No.
Okay. Have you been dismissed from any projects?
No.
Okay. Can you, or Andrew, help me understand in like how this is funded in hot tax? Has there been any change at the state level to our hot tax maximum? And am I understanding correctly that we have spent our hot tax as it stands, but yet we're, we're looking to fund at least this amount of money through hot tax?
So this is different meaning that it's going to be funded by hot tax that we've already collected, not increasing the rate. So it's all within the existing percentage that we already collect. It's just from fund reserves of current balance.
And the reason we have more is because hotel industry, yes. Like they've sold more rooms than we expected them to. So we've collected more tax than we expected to collect. But the rate has been the same. Is that correct?
Correct, yes, the rate's the same, just collections are improved. But we also keep strong fund balances that Laura could also discuss with you. But, so not an increase in the percentage of what rooms are charged, just overall collections. We have the dollars for this project from existing dollars.
And nothing at this time at the state has increased the, the hot tax maximum.
No, sir.
So when we're, when we're looking at funding this, we're looking at funding this particular contract through excess revenues from the current year in hot tax.
Correct.
Am I saying that right?
And going into next year because it'll be between two fiscal years.
Right.
Yes.
Okay, so that's how we're looking at the 494.
Yes. Now, as far as planning and how they come up with a plan and the strategy to pay for this, that'll all be part of that discussion, whether, yes, the future project.
Future project, major project paid for through funding strategies that are developed.
Yes, so those strategies could consider 20 different things to try and pay for it. But this is just paying for their services out of existing resources.
Laura, do you have something to add to that?
Yes, I just checked, and on our hotel occupancy tax collections through this fiscal year, through the end of May, we are one and a half million dollars over budget. We budgeted very conservatively. That's over 51% over our budget in the current year. So we had not earmarked those dollars for anything in the current year budget. So we could pull from that money to help pay for this contract. So we've been telling you that hot collections have been strong, they're very strong.
And we would not, just to add to that, we would not intentionally budget that conservatively. Bear in mind, at the time that we put this budget together, we were in the very hottest part of coronavirus, last July, August. So we did not know how fast hot would recover, how fast hotel occupancy. We didn't know when. We definitely thought it would recover, but we did not expect it to recover as quickly or as strong as it has. So that's why this, this money exists. It's not because we wouldn't have undershot revenues that dramatically. We do want to make sure we put a number out there that we are pretty confident we can hit, or very confident we can hit. But this happened different than what we projected, I think for understandable reasons.
So just describe to me briefly, and I should know this. So hot tax is not a revenue source that we're looking at right now for the funding of this particular project. We're limited with two and a half more years for a bond on property taxes, correct?
Well, you're limited in doing a certificate of obligation, but you could go and do another GO bond to the voters. Is that what you're referring to?
Yes.
Yes, yeah.
So you could do a general obligation.
Right, you could take it back to the voters anytime, either the same project, different project. You just couldn't do a CO for the same exact project.
Okay.
Well, and you could do CO for a different project substantially. And so that's something that bond council is going to have to weigh in on. Was the project changed enough to make it eligible for CO investment on any future project if it was different from the original project? That's getting into the minutia of the law. We could do a general obligation voter-approved debt issuance immediately. But, but this would take a substantial amount of time to go through this whole process and then to design and get to a point where we're ready to talk about what, if any, additional resources are going to be needed from the city. We just don't know exactly what type of capital stack, and I'm going to use their term, their mix of capital resources, whether it's private sector, public sector, et cetera, to be able to fund the project.
Okay. If you could, tell me a little bit about how you, what would be your draw schedule? How would you anticipate payment?
For this?
For this project, so assuming we signed a contract, what would be the draw schedule?
As, as it's shown on that, on that schedule, there's the June, July, August, September, October, November. That's my, my, my best estimates for now.
Okay. So if you go to exhibit A, I have a few questions specifically on a couple of your breakout items.
Sure.
Am I reading this correctly that there, if you look down under soft costs down at the bottom, construction manager, do we have $30,000 allocated there? Or is that up at operated tax service?
That's for all of those, yeah. There's only, there's only $10,000 for construction manager.
So you have $10,000 for construction management, and then the 30 is comprised of what, Steve?
The 30 is a contingency. So see the, see the, this, this agreement, so the PDSA, a contingency is 15 and 15 expected for the last two months, just in case there's addition. just in case there's additional geotech work or additional environmental work or any of those things. So we're just carrying a contingency. You don't pay it unless it's spent.
Gotcha. Okay, good. And so you, where would you spend the construction manager money on this? As far as the design phase goes, I'm a little lost.
That, well, we typically have a construction manager, a senior construction manager involved in this project from our side, working with the contractor and the architects to just make sure what they're doing really works with what we, what we know works. So it's, you know, it's $2,500 a month for each piece for just for two months for somebody to really, a senior person to be putting their eyes on this from a construction standpoint. Not the contractor, somebody looking over the contractor.
Okay.
Yeah.
So the soil report, and I don't know this, I had asked and I don't know if we had enough time. We may have a...
Yeah, these are just estimates based on what I think you're going to need. If you have those soil reports, you don't spend that money.
Is the contract written in a way where if we, if we don't pay that amount, you know, the, it's not a lump sum total bid?
I can tell you that's the way it is right now. I'll say it right now. All these, the cost legal, the architecture fees, my travel costs, the soils reports, environmental, those are all what I'm estimating they're going to be. If we don't spend that, we're not billing that.
Okay. So can I say it this way? Do we have a cost plus not to exceed this amount of money?
Yes.
And so if we, if we don't spend these amount of monies, we provide a soil report, we provide the geotech data, whatever, then obviously we wouldn't be billed for that.
Absolutely.
We work together as a team and then if the soils report costs you $20,000 to get, the city wouldn't be billed any additional cost. Or do we have a true cost plus agreement with you here?
I, I, I think we're fine with the estimates that I have. So I think I'm okay with sticking with that if we had to, if we had to pick up something.
And if I can ask Brian, Brian, do you read this contract as a cost plus not to exceed in the way the schedule of values are lump sum together? Is that fine?
Yes.
Okay. I think that's it on my end.
Great.
Questions from this side of the table? Howard?
What, if any, and you can see, if you were here for the first three hours of this meeting.
I was.
We're going to have a meeting with community members. What, if any, input would you be asking for from the community?
I'd say initially, it's going to be, it's going to be some of the uses of the civic center itself. I think a lot of times we have these conversations about civic center and convention center. I think we talked about this a few weeks ago when we were here, looking at trying to make the existing center competitive and figuring out how that works with, with the civic needs. So I think that's really one of the big conversations we'd want to have with the city.
Would there be anybody from the council or public that?
Absolutely.
Would be participating. I saw something in there about a meeting monthly. What was that meeting about?
Yeah, I think the city will, will address who wants to be on the, on that panel.
Yeah, the monthly is built in as kind of a regular update discussions with the city just in general. But I know council last meeting talked about if this contract is approved, formulating a citizens council committee to help work on this project. So I think that's to be determined.
On another project that's moving a little bit farther along than this, we have weekly meetings with city manager and there's a councilman on that, on that call every week. So we're happy to be very open. We're transparent.
Any follow-ups?
So with Howard, do we still have a commitment to have a council-appointed committee from citizens? I'm not saying any of us would sit on it. We could, I guess, but that we would appoint somebody and we would formulate a new citizen committee that would help in oversight and walking through this, doing some legwork for you? Is that still on the table?
I think it's still on the table.
We wouldn't want to use the existing committee that we already have. I mean, I'm just saying, you know, we would be going through this process again to reappoint, and we do have a citizens committee now.
I think there would be value in offering those folks to be a part of the process. And if Cole feels like he would like to appoint somebody, then we could allow him that opportunity.
And I do agree that some of those individuals that have already gone through this process are already up to speed. And if given the opportunity to continue to do this work and they want to, it's not limited to five. And so like we could, we could allow them to remain. And then if anybody wanted to appoint one person, as long as it wasn't disputed, then I would like that. I think that's a good way to go.
So Cole, would you be willing to put together a list of four or five people?
Sure will.
And be prepared with that maybe at the next meeting?
I will, yeah.
Okay. I'll open that up to you guys as well. Y'all were part of the process that selected that first committee. But if, if you had somebody you wanted to bring on board, then bring your list and we can have a dialogue about that.
What committee were you talking about?
The citizens civic center proposal. It was Mike Hughes, Rod Schroder, David Lovejoy, Jennifer Gallardo, and Julie Sims. Those were the five.
And I'm happy, I'm happy with those individuals if they're willing to continue to serve. So and then council member Cole could add, you know, a member or so to the committee.
Okay. Okay, any other questions for Steve? I know we're going to have some more discussion it may generate, but Steve, you got a fighting chance. You walk out right now. We'd like to see you catch that plane.
I'm okay. I'm okay.
Any other questions for Andrew? Okay. Cole, good questions. I'm just curious about your, your question about lawsuits and just, did you hear something on the street or you have knowledge about that that made you ask that?
No, I was, I was on the same email with an individual that contacted me and just said, you know, that they had been dismissed, the firm had been dismissed. Being a contractor, I understand that there are some projects that I have done my very best and the project didn't go. And that cannot be at any reason for my lack of doing a good job or for your firm having any issues. But I do think in hiring a firm for something like this, if we didn't at least ask the question of, are you currently in any lawsuits? I don't know that that would be, you know, the right way to hire you. So I don't mean that in a negative way, but I know if I was bidding on a, a large project like this, I think I would, I would probably be expected to answer that.
Absolutely. We were not dismissed from Irving. We did not do a project in Beaumont. And you've talked to a number of people in Lubbock. We know that the three projects we're doing have gone great, so.
I just wondered, I wondered where that came from. It sounded like a really specific question. It sounds like it was generated by an email that you received from somebody. So thank you for just giving more. Okay, good. Just thanks for giving more context to that. Any other questions here? I'm sorry, Cole, did you have a question? I mean, cut you off on that. Okay, great. Then I think we are ready for a motion on this item. Do we have a motion on this?
Yes, Mayor, we do. I move to authorize the city manager to execute a contract and other necessary documents for a pre-development services agreement with Garfield Public Private LLC for professional services related to the Emerald Civic Center complex not to exceed $494,200.
It's been moved by council member Powell and seconded by council member Sauer to approve the city manager to enter into a contract with Garfield Public Private L. Is it LCC or LLC?
LLC.
LLC.
Oh, that's a...
So that's a typo. We need to just...
I thought that was, I thought that was wrong.
I'm thinking, I don't know what an LCC is, but maybe.
That's a new, that's a new deal.
Okay. So there's a motion on the table. Any questions or discussion about that motion? Again, I think we're in an exploratory phase, wanting to know what are the options? What are the different ways to pay for it? Not just landing on the property taxpayers. And so that's really what I see as a focus of this next step. But any other thoughts before we call for, call the question? Yeah, we got a second. Eddie was a second. Okay, I'll call the vote. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes with a 5-0 vote. Thank you, Steve.
Don't speed.
Don't speed, yeah. The last item on our agenda today is item 3C, considering appointments to boards and commissions. As y'all know, we do board and commission appointments in November, but inevitably we have people who move or positions open up. So we're doing a mid-year catch-up to fill some places that need to be filled. And y'all each received a packet that had those open places as well as people that had applied for serving in those positions. So at this time, if y'all don't mind, I'm digging for, I've got such a big pile of paperwork up here. Found it, okay. We'll start one with, the first two positions are council-filled positions. And the first one is audit committee. Eddie has served on that committee for a while. It's only, it's a two-person committee. And Elaine had served there also. I really would like to see our mayor pro tem go into that position. Just creating some experience there in that mayor pro tem position. So I don't know what you guys are thinking, but I wanted to just start out with that idea.
I'm fine with that.
I'm fine with it too. She'll do it.
Well, I was going to say, we should ask her first if she would be willing to do it.
Yes, I accept.
I think we just move and vote.
I accept to do that, so I'll ask council member Stanley to make the motion.
So do we need to make a motion?
Cole, would you be willing to make a motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that Place Two, Frida Powell, would serve as the audit committee vacancy. Anything else?
That's it? So we've got a motion from council, council member Stanley and a second from council member Smith.
You do realize how rare that is, Cole, right?
Did make a motion. That's my first motion.
I've only made one or two motions at a time.
Okay, all of those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Okay, that passes with a 5-0 vote. The neighborhood oversight committee is a committee that works with our neighborhood planning program. And again, that's a position that Elaine Hayes had filled and she and Frida both served on that board. I really would like to, when we first started serving together, we appointed a few subcommittees before I realized that it creates a pickle, a communications pickle, if the mayor's not part of the subcommittee, because there's only five of us. And so as far as having a conversation with those subcommittee members about whether an item is ready to come on the council agenda or just getting an update on where things are so that I, I have visibility on when it might come on an agenda, I then get boxed out because I can't talk to them under the Open Meetings Act. They've already talked to each other about it. So with that being said, audit committee, we don't really have that problem because it's on a set timeframe and they're going to come and give a report to council. Neighborhood oversight committee is more dynamic. And so I really would appreciate the opportunity to serve on that committee with council, or mayor pro tem Powell, just for the sake of having that visibility that I didn't have when it was Elaine and Frida serving on there together. So any thoughts on that, council?
I think that's a great idea.
Okay, do we have a motion on that then?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah?
Mayor, I move to appoint you to the neighborhood oversight committee to fill the one vacancy that is now available.
Okay, we have a motion from mayor pro tem Powell and a second from council member Sauer. Any discussion on that? Different opinions? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, that passes with a 5-0 vote. Jared, on our list here, I'm not seeing the CVB.
CVB is the last one.
Okay, got it, sorry. I was, yeah, I was checking all my blocks on. I know, like this whole row of CVB folks that have made it for the whole meeting.
Then to find out it's not actually on the agenda.
Yeah, y'all are not on the agenda.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I'm sorry for that. Everybody's heart skipped a beat. Since we do have people here for CVB, let's just move you guys as the next one. Can we do that? Anybody have a problem with that? So that was also a position that Elaine was serving in. There are two vacancies for this board and one is a council member position and then another is just straight up, and Cashin, you may want to talk to us about that. As a matter of fact, Cashin, you want to come up to the podium? It's your first chance to address us with the new place one member.
Yes. So if you'll remember, we, whenever we structured the board, we have seats that are specific to hotels, attractions, and then citizens along with the council seat. Sadly, Diane Baker passed away and lost a great bit of expertise in that role. So we are trying to replace the citizen, the open citizen seat. And really want, we were kind of thoughtful, thoughtful in who we suggested and there was discussion amongst the board to really bring in something that would help us. We feel like we're taking leaps and bounds forward in this last year and really getting through a lot very quickly with a very proactive board. So we have, we would like to suggest Coco Duckworth. She brings in a lot of experience when it comes to staff training, strategic planning, a lot of the things that we are focused on right now. She has sat on many, many boards over the years, so has some nonprofit understanding of the structure and I think will help guide us over the next couple of years.
And just this position, Cashin, is one that is an open, like,
Citizens.
Not, not an attraction position, not a hotel position. So it's, it's open to any citizen.
Yes.
Who does or doesn't have hospitality or entertainment experience.
And our thoughts, putting these three seats aside for citizen was to bring in key factors as we might find weaknesses through the years. So whether that be we have an auditor, a lawyer, you know, like starting as a new organization, Angela brings to the table nonprofit, many, many years of nonprofit and grant writing expertise. And then we've got a lawyer just to make sure that as we were moving through things, if we really started getting, you know, sideways, that we had somebody on the board to call us out on that. Diane, of course, had many decades of CVB experience, actually. So with her passing, we were like, you know, we're not going to be able to fill that hole with anybody here in town. But Coco definitely brings some strategic, I guess, a passion for being strategic in your thinking with her. And we're on that track and we'd like to stay on that track. So we think she speaks to our movement right now.
Who's with you today?
So today, this is our entire staff as of right now. So today we have Stephanie Andrews, Client Services, Director of Sales, Amy Tarr. We have Mary Ramirez, who is our executive admin. Hope Stokes, Director of Marketing, and Brayley Hand, who, or I'm sorry, Beck, she's recently married. Our tourism manager.
Wonderful. I appreciate you guys being here as a team. Y'all really have done so much in the last 10 months.
It's the first time in about a year and a half that we've all been together in a council meeting. So we were excited to come sit with you guys today.
Welcome back. Howard?
I want to make a motion.
Okay, are we ready for a motion? Any questions for Cashin? Okay, make a motion.
I move that Frida Powell serve on that and Coco Duckworth.
I thought you would nominate Coco. Okay, okay, so, all right, we have a motion for Frida. And Coco, we hadn't done any discussion on council members? Any other council members? We have a council member who's new and might need a job.
Yeah, so I would, I mean, I'm willing to serve on this and I know it needs to be filled by a council. But I don't, I don't know, honestly, I would just like your opinion in the way of like, Frida may be better qualified to do it and bring something to the table that would be what you need. So like if you have a preference, let us know. I'm not asking you to pick between us, but then.
I'll, I'll give you two very strong answers on that because we actually discussed and thought about this in a big way. This, you know, we like, Howard and I work together very closely on tourism projects. So we know that he has a great understanding of the office. You know, Ginger, of course, has a great understanding of the office. Frida, in a lot of ways, brings some diversity to neighborhoods. Frida, in a lot of ways, brings some diversity to neighborhoods to us. We have a hard time in communicating in certain areas of town to get to information on events and restaurants and those kinds of things. And we think that she could help with those conversations that would really expand our story to the visitors. So that's where we landed on that. But to be honest with you, I would not mind you serving with us. I always look at an opportunity to educate, I guess, on what we do. Always helps with our local branding and ambassadors out in the community. But we had, we had discussed and kind of leaned towards Frida.
If I can, I'm going to pass the buck. And Frida, if you, if you want to serve on this and you, you have the time and you're interested, then I mean, I support that and I will look for other ways to plug in and maybe fill in another gap. If, if you feel like, you know, that's not the direction you need to go, then I will serve.
And I will say that we're going to do this in six months. We're going to pick up and do all the boards again. Your fire hose might not be as full as it has. So maybe that is a good time.
Sure.
For us to look at, you know, you guys have been on LGC. Maybe you'd be willing to give up and, you know, one of you roll off of LGC and hand that position off. So let's, let's think toward anything we want to shift in November. How does that sound?
Good.
Yeah? Okay, so.
As long as you're good.
Okay, I'm good with it.
Frida, are you willing?
Yes.
Okay, so back to a motion made by Councilmember Smith for Ms. Duckworth and Mayor Pro Temp Powell. Do we have a second on that motion?
Second.
We have a second from Councilmember Stanley. Any discussion or questions about the motion? All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Cashin, you have two new members.
Well, thank you. And I will say Howard used to come to the board whenever Elaine was on. So you're always welcome to attend those board meetings if you would like. We'll make sure that there's no more than two in the room. But we can also get you plugged in with the hoteliers and the attractions and partners. We have a lot of different kinds of meetings and ways that we interact with them. If you would like to get to know that part of the community, we can definitely work on that.
Yeah, and that can also be posted. So if all five council members want to come.
Mm-hmm, that's true.
You know, I mean, that's the other option.
Come look at the Star Report. We're taking names right now.
So that would be something that I would just put on the city manager's radar to possibly put on our city secretary's radar that we, we need to make sure that Cole is getting information about when those meetings are happening, anytime those boards and commissions are meeting. So whether that's a once-a-month email that says upcoming board and commission meetings, I think we've kind of settled into some communication channels, but it wouldn't be bad for us to all be getting that email. But that would definitely give Cole some visibility on meetings that are happening that month. And then Cole, it's super important to call Jared and say, I want to come to this one so that he can either get something posted as far as a notice or just make sure more, only two of us show up.
Understood. Thank you.
I'm glad you mentioned that, Cashin.
And Mayor, what staff has, has previously done is all of the meetings that occur, you know, like, what is it, DJ Steubens, her networking meetings and things like that, they just post them on the website and they do LGC and all of those two.
Yeah, that's true. They are on the website. Thank you for making that point.
Just to kind of, so that we, maybe we don't get in the habit of getting an email or going to the website.
Mm-hmm, okay. That's true. They're on the city's calendar. Absolutely true. Okay, thank you, Cashin. Thank y'all for staying. We enjoyed having you. Okay, let's jump back up and do the LGC. We've got one vacancy on the Local Government Corporation. And we'll just start by taking suggestions from the floor of people that you might want to nominate. I thought Jennifer Gallardo might be someone we would consider. Bring some diversity and femaleness onto that board.
Oh, that's a great idea.
That's a great choice.
Do you know Jennifer, Cole?
I don't think I do.
We need to.
I'll have to get to know her.
Yeah, yeah, we need to get that introduction.
Well, then I'm going to make a motion that we place Jennifer Gallardo on the LGC.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second motion by Dr. Sauer, a second from Councilmember Smith, to appoint Jennifer Gallardo. So I probably need to reach out to her. I did not do that.
I was just going to send her a text and say congratulations.
Congrats, you're on. Yeah, right, yeah, okay, so let's.
Be surprised if she didn't.
I would be surprised also, but that has been approved. So once she accepts that nomination, then LGC will have a new board member. Parks and Rec has two vacancies. Three.
If I could interrupt, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Michael let me know that there were actually three vacancies to that. And so that is in your agenda packet. It was not, the third place was not included in the packet I sent out to you.
Thank you for clarifying that. So there are three vacancies there. And I think one of those is a, Eddie, are you currently on that board?
No, that's the one I kind of asked for.
Okay, so we have a council member position that's, was Elaine previously on that board? So really, we have four positions. Come and talk to us, Michael, as I've.
I think the three includes.
Three includes the council member, okay.
We have three total vacancies. One was Councilmember Hayes. One was a member that moved away. And then the third was an appointee that never accepted the role. So we have three current vacancies.
Okay, great.
Two for citizens, one for.
Two for citizens, one for council. I have heard Eddie expressing a desire to work on the Parks and Rec Board.
I move that we appoint Eddie to that board.
Okay. A second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Smith and seconded by Mayor Pro Temp Powell to appoint Councilmember Sauer to the Parks and Rec Board. Any questions, further discussions? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? That moves, that motion passes with a 5-0 vote. Now we need to do two others, citizen positions for that board.
I'd nominate John Forbes. So I know John. He's a great, he's a fine young man. This would be a really good way for, to get him involved in things that are going on in the city. And I think he'd make a great addition to that board.
Okay. Okay, so we have a motion and a second motion by Dr. Sauer and a second from Howard Smith with regard to John Forbes as a member of the Parks and Rec Board. Anything from the other side of the table in regard to John? All of those in favor of the motion for John Forbes, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No, when I read his resume, he is affiliated with, I believe, Emerald Independent School District.
Canyon, I think.
Is it Canyon?
Yeah.
Canyon School District, yeah, so.
I'd like to nominate Jason Tillery to the Parks and Rec Board. Somebody that I've, I guess, got to know pretty well over the last six months and see a lot of good character and a lot of good wherewithal with him. He has a heart for Parks and Rec and in a discussion, he said he was willing to go to work. I think that's what we're looking for.
I think that's perfect.
Okay, is that a motion?
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
Jason Tillery, Parks and Rec.
Great, we have a second from Councilmember Sauer. So any discussion about the motion to appoint Jason Tillery to the Parks and Rec Board? Have you talked to him about it, Cole?
I did, yes. So he's, he's good to go.
He's a green light on that. Good. Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion for Jason Tillery, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, that passes with a 5-0 vote. Okay, John, you got a good team there. Go to work.
We didn't get to vote on Eddie, but I guess we'll take him.
Yeah, you got to take him. Okay.
Sorry.
All right, good. Animal Management and Welfare, oh wait, I skipped over Construction Advisory and Appeals Commission. One vacancy here. And this is the one where we need specific industry people.
I have a question because I would like to nominate, but I need to know if he qualifies. So he isn't, he's a State Farm Insurance agent. And so it's Russ Glaze. He has his own, I guess he would be a broker. I should have asked him. So does fire and casualty recording agent have a specific need in that role? Or can we fill that with an insurance agent? And then Russ Glaze is very experienced in construction and his family's had multiple construction companies. He grew up doing that. So I think he's qualified outside of that role.
My understanding is it just requires an insurance. So there's a wide range of people that will check the box for insurance. So an insurance agent, an insurance broker, somebody who has familiarity and understanding of the insurance field will bring, the reason they want that is it'll bring benefit to the, to the, to the committee, to the CAAC. But it does not stipulate any specific field or role.
Okay. Do, do we have any other nominations or should I not ask?
There was another name in the packet that I thought looked great, Rodney Ramirez, but.
Oh, and I do know him. I think highly of him as well. That's right.
Okay, with, with Russ Glaze.
Yeah, Amina, why don't you make the motion, Cole?
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to nominate Russ Glaze to our Construction Advisory and Appeals Commission.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Stanley and seconded by Councilmember Sauer to appoint Russ Glaze to our Construction Advisory and Appeals Commission. Any discussions or questions on that motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes with a 5-0 vote. Last one is Animal Management and Welfare Board. We only have one vacancy there and we had previously, staff had recommended that we go to Texas Tech University, the Texas Tech Veterinary School of Medicine, and have a standing appointment from them, which solidifies the partnership that we're developing with them. Anybody have concerns about that approach?
I think that, that needs to happen. I think we need to make for sure that we're making an effort, that we're drawing, that we're including. If Texas Tech Vet School is going to be a big part of our community and there's already several that are going to be on staff and we're going to have their students rotating through, then it would be really smart to have their expertise on the advisory board.
So I think Ms. Bethany Schilling would be great for that position and she's already been out there to animal management and welfare quite a bit. And she's probably going to be a good fit for their team.
And she's already agreed that if she's nominated, she would do it.
There you go.
Okay, so where's the motion?
I move to appoint, just a moment here, let me look at this really quick here. Let's see here. I move to appoint Ms. Bethany Schilling to the vacancy, for the vacancy on the Animal Management and Welfare Board.
Second.
Been moved by Mayor Pro Temp Powell and seconded by Councilmember Sauer to appoint Bethany Schilling to the Animal Management Welfare Board. Any discussion or questions about the motion?
Yeah, I think probably what we need to do from here is I would like to have staff prepare an ordinance so that we basically make that a standing part of that advisory board. That way, going forward, always, whatever that rotation is through, whether it's ever two or three years, that we always are bringing somebody from the Tech Vet School onto that advisory board.
We can bring that to you.
So would that mean that they would appoint somebody?
But it would be, they might nominate somebody, but it would be subject to our approval.
Yeah, they'd make a recommendation to council and council would appoint somebody. You do not have to just appoint anybody. Or anybody, really, but we would assign a seat to Texas Tech. You just have to be on board with whoever they're recommending.
Which they, I mean, they have brought a lot to the table already in letting us use their purchasing authority to stock the lab and the surgery room and just the volunteer, man, we are about to get an army of volunteers from, from their students. So I think because of the skin they're putting in our game out there, it would be very beneficial to have that solidified. But does anybody have a check-in or a concern about that? Okay, so I think we have that covered, don't we, Jared?
Yes, ma'am.
Got that in your notes? All right, we're ready to call for a question then on the motion. All those in favor of the motion for Dr. Schilling, please say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Okay, that passes with a 5-0 vote. And am I correct, council, that's the last, Leanne, did I get all of those? Leanne, did I get all of those board and commission appointments? Okay, just want to make sure I didn't skip one. That brings us to the end of our agenda. So at this time, we are adjourned. Thank y'all for your work today.